Thank you for being here today.
You're absolutely right.
I'm the Chair of the Lyme Task Force and Tick-Borne Diseases, and it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm so honored to have everyone that's going to contribute today. I always say our personal stories propel us forward. My son was never diagnosed with Lyme disease, but bit by a tick and has had the symptoms. I had a brother who had Lyme disease not diagnosed for at least eight to 10 years and died by suicide. Really looking forward to listening to the psychiatrist that's here today, and from others. But I can't thank you enough for taking the time. It's a really vast group that we have today, and I think it's very interesting because everybody that's involved in this is coming to the table, and that's what it's all about. So, thank you for being here, and I'm joined by Chair of the Health Committee, Senator Kemp Hannon.
And just wanted to acknowledge that we have a very impressive group of senators joining us because of their interest in the topic. Starting over on my right would be Senator Jim Tedesco, Senator Velezky, David Velezky, Senator Pam Helming, Senator George Amador, Senator Betty Little, and from the far reaches of Long Island, Senator Kenneth Laval. And just wanted to say thank you to the department, to the Commissioner. Appreciate your interrupting what was otherwise a tranquil summer, not like the other public health problems we've dealt with together. And so I'll just let you start, and we'll go forward.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairpersons Hannon and Serino, and other members here today from the Senate's Task Force on Lyme and Tick-Borne Diseases, and the Senate's Committee on Health. I am Dr. Howard Zirk, I'm the Commissioner of Health for the Department of Health, and I'm joined today by Brian Bakkenson. On my right, an epidemiologist and Deputy Director of the department's Bureau of Communicable Disease Control, and on my left by Dr. Ron Lindberger, who's the Director of the Division of Infectious Diseases at the Wadsworth Center. I would like to thank the Senate for the invitation to discuss Lyme and tick-borne diseases in New York State, and I appreciate the commitment to the thousands of New Yorkers impacted by these diseases and your commitment to this, and I look forward to our continued work together on these issues. So let me give you a little bit of an overview. The department has a long history of working with tick-borne diseases that began in the 1970s in response to the presence of, at that time, Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever. Since that time, at least nine additional tick-borne diseases have been identified in New York State, including Lyme, anaplasmosis, Babesiosis, Ehrlichiosis, and Powassan. And other recently discovered diseases have been found in other parts of the country and may eventually be found in this state at some point in the future. These diseases cause a significant burden to New Yorkers every year, and approximately 8,000 cases of Lyme disease, 700 cases of anaplasmosis, 400 cases of Babesiosis, 100 cases of Ehrlichiosis, and 30 cases of other tick-borne illnesses are reported to the department annually. There are undoubtedly many more cases, particularly of Lyme disease, that are treated by community physicians and are not reported or do not meet the case definition. The geographic distribution of these diseases has changed over the years. Where Lyme was once a disease of Long Island and the Lower Hudson Valley, it is now found all over the state, with increasing numbers in the Adirondack region and areas west of Syracuse. Diseases like anaplasmosis and Babesiosis are following that same geographic pattern with a 10- to 15-year lag behind that of Lyme disease. Tick distributions are also changing. For most of the past 40 years, the deer tick, or as we're more commonly calling it, the black-legged tick, has been the most common tick in the state. The spread of many of the diseases previously mentioned is directly related to this increase in population and distribution across New York. However, in recent years, the lone-star tick population has been rapidly increasing across Long Island, seemingly overtaking the deer tick population. While the lone-star tick populations have gone up, the deer tick populations have gone down. And this should result in a decrease in the number of cases of Lyme disease, anaplasmosis, and Babesiosis in areas where deer tick populations are decreasing, and an increase in the number of Ehrlichiosis cases where the number of lone-star tick cases are increasing. This pattern is already beginning in Long Island, and it remains to be seen if it will expand to other parts of the state as well. Relatedly, a new health condition, an allergy to red meat, has been reported in the news and attributed to lone-star tick bites. The allergy is caused by a sugar called alpha-gal and the body's response to it. In most people, alpha-gal in red meat is broken down in the body easily. It is hypothesized that the lone-star tick saliva contains alpha-gal as well, and when the body is exposed to the alpha-gal in the tick saliva, the body may develop an immune response, an antibody reaction to it. And the presence of these antibodies is thought to result in a reaction when the body next encounters the alpha-gal, often in red meat. And there have been several reports of allergies on the eastern end of Long Island where the lone-star ticks are commonly seen, and the department will continue to monitor the medical research on this unique allergy. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the role of the department. As you know, tick-borne illnesses pose a number of challenges on multiple fronts. From a clinical perspective, some of these challenges include appropriate and timely diagnosis, laboratory testing, and clinical management. Public health challenges involve several areas, including effective prevention controls such as tick management, public messaging, and human insect surveillance. We face both entomological and clinical research challenges as well. At the department, we focus our efforts on three key fronts. So first, on human disease surveillance, then on tick surveillance, and also on public education. So I'm going to go through those a little bit. First, on the human disease surveillance. Obviously, human disease surveillance is truly the backbone of all of the department's communicable disease activities and all of our tick-borne diseases. And I've mentioned we're required to report to, I have mentioned they are required to report to the department by healthcare providers and testing laboratories. So if there is a case of one of these diseases, then it comes to us, and we are informed of it. The department works closely with local health departments to assist with case investigations, and reports that are confirmed cases, we send off to the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC. So this surveillance allows for monitoring of disease trends over time, including changes in the case numbers, the geographic distribution, the symptoms, as well as other information. The vast majority of laboratory testing for tick-borne diseases is performed by commercial laboratories, but some of the testing is performed at the Wadsworth Center, which is our department's public health laboratory. Wadsworth is the primary testing lab for Powassan virus and for Borrelia Miyamotoi, and can perform primary testing for other tick-borne diseases. All laboratory tests that are positive for Babesiosis must be confirmed at Wadsworth Laboratory. Clinical laboratory testing for tick-borne agents is challenging. For tick-borne agents other than Lyme disease, there are very few FDA-approved methods. Therefore, the laboratories have developed their own testing methods. The laboratory can test blood directly for tick-borne agents using molecular methods, or can test for antibodies that indicate that there's been exposure to a tick-borne agent. In general, these tests are effective. However, with Lyme disease, a patient's blood harbors very few bacteria, and so it's therefore very difficult to detect this directly. And most Lyme cases are instead diagnosed by testing for antibodies to Borrelia, and there are a number of FDA-approved serologies or blood tests for that. However, because the patients have a unique immune response to Borrelia, it can be a challenge to interpret these tests in some cases, and there clearly is a need for more sensitive and specific testing methods for Lyme disease. The next part is about tick surveillance. So the department is one of only three or four states in the nation that routinely perform tick surveillance. The department has collected ticks statewide since 2008 at over 100 state, county, municipal parks and preserves, collecting twice a year to capture both the nymphal and adult ticks, primarily the deer ticks, and bringing those ticks back to the laboratory to test for pathogens. Collecting ticks in a standardized way also allows for year-to-year comparisons, which is very important, and ticks are tested for the pathogens that cause Lyme disease, that cause anaplasmosis, Babesiosis, Powassan virus, and Borrelia Miyamotoi. The last one is a bacterium that was recently recognized as a potential pathogen. Test results are relayed to the local health departments, to the park managers, to be used for awareness, for education, and for park maintenance as well. The information gathered from human disease surveillance can influence tick surveillance and vice versa. So in the past, human cases for Babesiosis in patients with no travel history led to tick collections and testing. The results of that tick testing showed unexpected levels of infectivity with the pathogen that was causing anaplasmosis, which in turn led to advisories to medical practitioners, making them aware of the symptoms and the laboratory testing for anaplasmosis. A similar situation happened earlier this summer, with the finding of three cases of Powassan virus infection in residents in Saratoga County. Powassan virus is a rera viral infection, is transmitted by a tick bite, either by a deer tick or a woodchuck tick. And while rera has been seen in the state 23 times prior to 2017, and in some instances there were multiple cases in one county in a single year. But the finding of three cases in Saratoga County in a relatively short period of time in a relatively small geographic area triggered additional tick surveillance above and beyond the routine surveillance, to determine if the conditions change in some way and if there is any heightened risk to local residents. The department expanded its collection efforts to add an additional 30 locations in Saratoga County, so a total of 2,700 ticks were collected at these additional sites. And today, I can report that there were five pools comprising only 22 ticks that were tested positive for Powassan. Two of the positive pools were found in the Saratoga Spa State Park, one was at the 100-acre Woods Trail in Multum, one was at the Saratoga National Historical Park in Stillwater, and the final pool was at a private residence elsewhere in the county. This is the first time that Powassan has been found in ticks in Saratoga County. The enhanced surveillance will continue in the fall with collection of adult ticks from many of these same sites, as well as collection and testing of blood from hunter-killed deer for previous exposure to Powassan. Then the third part is the issue of public education. The third primary role of the department, in addition to human disease surveillance and tick surveillance, obviously is public education is very important. Fundamental, fundamental to the prevention of tick-borne diseases is the adoption of personal protective, protection measures by the public. The department strives to package and deliver those messages in ways that are most likely to result in behaviors necessary for people to avoid contracting tick-borne illnesses. We use both human disease and vector surveillance data to help geographically direct our efforts. In recent years, the department and local health departments have used digital media campaigns to target geographic regions that are first experienced or are on the leading edge, I should say, of Lyme disease, since residents in these areas may not have been getting the personal prevention messages in the past. We also use surveillance data to guide education for healthcare workers. We let them know through regular provider advisories that tick season is present and that they should be on the lookout for diseases carried by ticks. We also issue special advisories when conditions warrant. For example, the department recently issued an advisory to healthcare providers in the Capitol District to make them aware of the Powassan virus, what symptoms to look for, and how to get samples tested. The department and local health departments have used public-facing web pages for years to make information about tick-borne diseases available to the public. One of the features of which we're most proud of is the recent addition of four short videos to our public website, which include issues about tick collection, tick testing, personal protection, and proper use of repellents, and proper tick removal. The tick removal video has generated thousands of hits, and has been used and shared to other states, other counties, other countries, and numerous media outlets. In recent years, we have experienced, and, sorry, in recent years, we have expanded our efforts and activities in our three key areas of focus, due in significant part to supplemental support from and in collaboration with you and your colleagues in the Senate. Over the past few years, funding for support for tick-borne disease research and awareness has made it available to the Adirondack Medical Center, to the Trujillo Institute, and Southampton Hospital, among others. The department has convened two very successful and well-received meetings of tick-borne disease researchers from across the state to promote collaboration. We have also held three collaborative meetings with county health departments, focusing on the best practices for surveillance and education. And to further raise public awareness about the tick preventive measures, we have distributed over 7,000 signs to municipalities and counties and other state agencies, such as the Department of Environmental Conservation, the Office of Parks Recreation, and Historic Preservation. Finally, we have enhanced our tick collection and testing capabilities with the support of graduate-level students who assist with analyzing our data and supplement our educational efforts as well. So what are our next steps? While we continue our efforts on our multi-pronged approach that I have spoken about, we have also developed both short and long-term plans to augment our current activities regarding tick-borne diseases. This fall, the department will collaborate with the Department of Environmental Conservation to include tick and tick-borne disease materials in hunter education and licensure programs, including providing a link to our tick removal video and our other online tick resources. The department already provides several thousand tick identification cards to be distributed in person at hunter education classes, so that people understand what some of the risks are and how to prevent themselves from getting infected. In addition, the department is collaborating with the state education department to implement recently enacted legislation that will make instructional tools and materials regarding tick-borne diseases available to school districts and available to libraries as well. These actions will enhance the public education awareness efforts the department has and will continue to undertake, our messages of reaching as many New Yorkers as possible regarding this issue. The department's work on tick-borne diseases over the past several decades has fostered the development of a vast amount of knowledge and experience and expertise and a significant collection of important data. In 2018, the department will be taking significant steps to share this information with stakeholders and the public at large. So first, the department will release a tick-borne disease surveillance and response plan. This is similar to the plan that we have put in place for mosquito-borne diseases. This plan acts as a guidebook for local health departments, discusses the current status of tick-borne diseases, the roles and responsibilities of the department, of local health departments as well, and prevention issues, and methods that can be considered to address ticks at the local level. Elements of this document have been developed as a result of the county collaborative that we have held over the past three years, working with all across the state with the different areas. Second, we will be moving our current and retrospective tick collection and testing results to Health Data New York. And this will make the data available to the public, and these data have always been shared with the local health departments and with the park managers to aid in the education and prevention campaigns. But given the considerable interest in these data from the public, from providers, from researchers, from advocates, we believe that making this data freely available is the responsible and transparent, responsible, transparent thing to do. And we expect the data to be available on the website at the beginning of the 2018 tick season. The department has embraced the responsibility that comes with one of the highest burdens of tick-borne diseases in the country, and has been and will continue to be a leader in tick-borne disease prevention and control since the department's scientists themselves first discovered the pathogen that caused Lyme disease back in 1979. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding ticks, and I am pleased to be here with my experts from my team. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for your testimony. And I know you were speaking about public awareness, and I go into the schools, because it's our children that are out there rolling around in the grass, our young ones, and I'm surprised, though, still, because I ask the kids in the class, how many children know about ticks and Lyme disease? And you have about a third of the class raise their hands. And then we talk about, show them the poppy seed, the size of the tick, and to let them know, don't take that off, show it to a nurse or a teacher. So I think there's still more that we have to do in the schools themselves, to let people know. And I always say, personal stories propel you forward, right? When I was a single mom, I wasn't going onto the computer and looking things up because I was working two or three jobs. So I don't know, I think there's just a few more things that we need to do, maybe concentrate some more in the schools, which we are doing with SED. And another question I have is that we keep hearing about the infection rate is going down, but do you attribute this to less infections or misdiagnosis and underreporting?
Well, I think, I think we have, on the first question, we do have to tackle the issue of education. We're working very hard on that. We have an incredible outreach, but we always could do more. So I think that more education and, as we all know, you know, communicate some of these messages to children is a good way to get the messages sometimes back to parents as well.
Yes.
So I think that we will work, continue to work with the school. I think it is a little bit of a change in where the, some of these ticks are being identified, and so we are, we have an aggressive campaign to identify different areas, and I think, as I was mentioning, some of it drops down a little bit in certain regions. Brian, did you want to?
All right. So the, to mention, go back to the first part again. You know, we've distributed, we actually have worked with New York City and generated a tick-borne disease kind of coloring book or workbook that has been distributed throughout camps earlier this year, where, you know, when you make a book that has to be found in multiple ways and so forth, you know, we've made a number of copies. We're going to wind up making a lot more as time goes forward as well. And again, we've tried to work with camps as kids are spending more time outdoors there as well. With regard to infection rates, like the Commissioner said, you know, they really do, they vary from time to time and from year to year, both in ticks and in people, with regards to the number that we get. If you, if you think about the tick populations, they do, they go up and down each year. And as they kind of go up and down each year, we wind up seeing, you know, more human illness or less human illness as time goes on. You know, usually, even years, there are a lot more ticks than there are in odd years. It's just the way that things work, and that's without the impacts of, you know, previous year's weather and so forth. So there definitely are instances where infection rates are going up. There seem to be places where infection rates may be going down in people. Places like Long Island, where there have been exposed to educational messages for, you know, 30, 40, even more years with regards to that, we'd like to think that a lot of those education messages have taken hold, and people have done a lot of the, kind of the protective behaviors to try and, and, you know, reduce them, the likelihood of being bitten by a tick long enough so it can transmit illness. In places, in parts of the state where they maybe don't have as much experience with ticks, it's going to take a little bit longer for those messages to really resonate and to people to really wind up changing their behavior.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Senator Velezky? Senator Tedesco?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here and your experts in testifying. There's only one part of my family that's been vaccinated for tick-borne illnesses and Lyme disease. That's my dog, Gracie. Are we any closer, or how close can we possibly be, to a type of vaccination for human beings in relationship to this?
Sure. So there's, research has been out there. In 1998 to 2001, there was a work on a vaccine, but there was a lot of problems with that, both scientifically, and there were some legal challenges that came forth, so that was pulled. The European community is now working on a vaccine. It's in the Phase I trial, so they have got 180 individuals who are in the first part to see its safety, and then it'll move forward to Phase II or Phase III. We need to work, we need to work on this, and I recognize it would be great to have a vaccine for Lyme, but we have to also remember there are the other tick-borne illnesses like Ehrlichiosis and Babesiosis and others, anaplasmosis, that we also need to still continue with the necessary preventive measures on that. Vaccines, you know, I understand the issue with, you know, you're an animal, but obviously with people, there's all these necessary things that we need to take to move that forward. Anything more that you can add?
Yeah, so vaccines are primarily developed in the private sector, and we certainly
Doctor, for the record, will you just identify, because this is all being webcast too, so.
Okay. Yeah. So, I'm Ron Lindberger, Director of the Wadsworth Center Infectious Diseases, and just wanted to add into the Commissioner's notes that vaccine development is typically done in the private sector. We do collaborate with them when, if they chose to seek us out to provide testing services. Just want to reiterate a little bit also what Dr. Zucker mentioned is, because we're talking about this earlier, is if you vaccinate against one disease and you go off into the woods and you're not concerned about ticks anymore because you know you're immune from Lyme disease, ticks harbor a lot of dangerous pathogens, and so that's such a key part of prevention that we have to keep that in mind.
Well, that brings me to another question, Commissioner. In 1979, were these other illnesses in place, or are they mutates, or are they just different illnesses that the ticks are carrying now?
Well, there are, these diseases were around at that point as well.
And how many different diseases have we identified that a tick can carry?
Well, there are, the ones I mentioned before, the five that I mentioned before, but there are also four other diseases that are out there in other parts of the country. There's one in the southern area, there's one in the Midwest part of the United States, and a couple others as well, and I will turn to the experts on how many others there are.
So even before 1979, when Lyme disease was, or even prior to that, when Lyme disease was first kind of, before it had a name and it was first being looked at, you know, Lyme disease is thought to have been on Long Island, you know, as far back as 1800s, early 1900s, when, you know, Montauknee was something that was described with regard to Native American populations at the eastern end of Long Island. It's thought that that was Lyme. It's taken time, as time's gone on, to, you know, to, as surveillance kind of picks up and you wind up picking up these diseases and trying to look for causes of them, you know, that's what led to the discovery of the pathogen that actually caused Lyme in 1979. As time's gone on, we've learned a little bit more about, about other illnesses. When we start to see symptoms that don't match things that we know about, we start to look, both in people and in ticks, to try and figure out, is it a new pathogen? There've been a lot of kind of microbiology and molecular techniques that have been in place that have led us to discover new pathogens. One of the big kind of fields of research right now is just not even looking for pathogens, but just looking to see what's growing in a tick's gut, what's growing in a person's gut. And in some ways, we're discovering new organisms, and you're kind of going backwards. You're trying to figure out this organism, and then trying to figure out, is that organism a pathogen? So in some ways, I would expect that we may find out that there are more bacteria, viruses, parasites that may be living in ticks. It just remains to be seen whether or not any of these are going to wind up being human pathogens, and then if they are, if they're going to be significant burdens of illness, or if they may just make a small number of people ill.
24 to 48 hours. If you get the tick off you, is that supposedly safe, or?
For the, for most tick-borne, so tick-borne diseases can be broken up into three categories for the most part. Diseases that are caused by viruses, diseases that are caused by bacteria, and diseases that are caused by parasites. So Lyme disease, Ehrlichiosis, anaplasmosis are all ones that are caused by bacteria. Babesiosis is a parasite. Powassan, Heartland virus, Bourbon virus, they're all viral diseases. The bacterial and pathogen illnesses typically, the tick needs to be feeding on you usually for at least 24 to 36 hours, if not longer, before that tick can transmit. And it's because the parasite or the bacteria has to move within the tick before it winds up getting to the salivary glands. In the viral illnesses like Powassan, you may have heard earlier this summer that that can get transmitted in as soon as 10 minutes, and it's because those viruses are basically spread throughout the tick, and they're already in the salivary glands. These are all transmitted through the saliva of the tick, so when the tick starts to feed on you, the saliva goes into the, goes into the wound, and it basically keeps your blood from clotting, and that's how the pathogen makes its way from the tick into you.
Okay. Number one question and call I get from my constituents. Didn't see a bullseye. Maybe it's been a year or two years. Now they're identified with Lyme disease. They get treatment, I guess, antibiotics, they're given a lot of it, they seem to feel better. Then they tell me it's become chronic. The insurance company says, I don't want to continue to pay. We already took care of that. That's something else you're dealing with. Is this a chronic disorder, or are these, potentially, or are they identified as chronic disorders, that if you don't catch early, and they just embed into your system, that they become chronic, and there's something that you're going to have to deal with for the rest of your life, potentially?
So, well, I recognize the challenges that people have had, and I've actually spoken to both patients and also people that I know who have said that they've had chronic Lyme disease with the problems. With regards to your question about coverage, and I can speak for Medicaid, that we, if someone has a lot of medical conditions, whether from Lyme, arthritis that occurs, or other things, those are covered. We look at this, we clearly look at, based on evidence-based practice, what needs to get covered, and we do cover things of that nature.
They do cover it.
Yeah.
You think the insurance companies do cover it?
Well, from, I can speak for the Medicaid side, which is the state's responsibility to cover that, and we would, we could work with, you know, talk to insurance companies about the coverage on the commercial side.
So there's five denying that we know of, there may be more. Are there different methodologies of treatment for each one of these things, or basically the same?
Yes. So let me touch back on the previous question, if you don't mind. You know, so with all these diseases, the earlier that you can diagnose them, the earlier they can be recognized, the earlier they can be treated, the better an outcome you potentially have with regards to kind of a full cure. You know, one of the things that we do when it comes to trying to educate providers, for example, is to, you know, tell them how to diagnose, tell them what samples to look for to wind up getting tested, and so forth. Earliest treatment with Lyme disease is going to give you your best likelihood for a cure. You mentioned the bullseye rash. It's, you're entirely correct, not everyone winds up getting that. And in some cases, because of the type of rash it is, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't itch, it's not raised, it's just there. If you happen to have one square in the bottom of your back, you may have it, you just may never know about it. And again, you may wind up completely missing it, you may wind up going untreated. And again, the longer you go untreated, the more difficult it is to treat later on down the road. Each of the diseases that we've talked about, particularly the ones caused by bacteria or parasites, Lyme, Babesiosis, Anaplasmosis, Ehrlichiosis- or parasites, Lyme, babesiosis, anaplasmosis, ehrlichiosis, can be treated. The viral ones, basically what you're doing is you're treating symptoms. So something like a pulocin or one of these diseases that we don't have here in New York yet, heartland or bourbon virus, those are ones that physicians will wind up trying to treat the symptoms. You've heard perhaps about people getting meningitis or encephalitis from pulocin. Again, what a physician there is trying to do is they're trying to reduce the swelling. They're not necessarily trying to eliminate the virus. They're basically trying to treat symptoms while your body's working to eliminate the virus itself.
So it could be a chronic situation for some people?
There definitely are, if untreated, there's definitely long-term outcomes for this, for particularly Lyme disease and other illnesses as well. You know, you do get into definitional issues with CDC and sort of other agencies with regards to long-term Lyme disease versus chronic Lyme as well.
Just one last question. Since 1979, is there any deaths or how many deaths can be attributed directly to being bit by a tick in Lyme?
The, so, I guess maybe the first thing that I should wind up saying is in our capacity at, in communicable disease control, which is where I work, we'll investigate the case, we'll kind of learn what's going on with regard to that individual case. In certain instances, there may be illnesses where somebody will have long-term symptoms or, you know, with a pulocin case, for example, they may wind up going into rehab, they may die in rehab nine months later, for example, and I may not wind up hearing about that. There undoubtedly are cases of babesiosis and anaplasmosis where people have died. Lyme disease is not in general thought to be a disease that's fatal with the symptoms that most people get, but if people wind up getting cardiac symptoms, people have died of kind of a sudden swelling of the heart as a result of Lyme disease.
I would just add also that you have to take it within the context that sometimes someone is ill with other medical conditions and then they get infected with Lyme disease on top of that and that's always going to be a challenge there.
Thanks.
Did anybody else have a question? Oh, Senator Little, please, I'm first. Okay, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here today too. One of the things that has been happening from the beginning, when we started with people being bit by a tick, is you could not get tested and the tests would not test positive until maybe a test done in California. Have we improved on the testing of Lyme disease?
So let me, let me go through a little bit about the testing issues because this has been brought up before. So the different tests that you could do, there's the ELISA test, which is an enzyme-linked immunosorbant assay, and there are different immunosorbant assays out there. So that test is sort of a little bit more of an overarching test. It could be positive for multiple different areas. So you can be positive or negative. So if you're negative from ELISA, by and large, then you're negative for Lyme or other diseases, by and large, and I'll get back to that in a second. If you're positive for that, then you go to the next step, which is a Western blot test to look at this specifically for, for the different areas. Now, the tests are done in different labs. New York State, you know, our Wadsworth lab is truly, you know, phenomenal place and we sort of approve anything that's going to be tested for a New York State resident then, then what's going to happen is we're going to make sure that that lab meets the standards that we want for our own lab elsewhere. So even if the test is done elsewhere in the, in the country, it still has to meet the standards that Wadsworth puts forth. Regarding the issue I bring back about that ELISA test, just so that, you know, just to be clear on this, sometimes someone will have a rash and they'll run and get a test and it may be really early and so you could possibly be negative very early, very, very early, you may need to be retested a little bit further along. And there are specific tests, there are immunoglobulin Ms, immunoglobulin GIGM for acute reaction, IGG for more of a chronic reaction. Ron, do you want to add?
Yeah, just a couple of points I could add on is, so we probably approved about 30 Lyme tests the department has for various labs in the state and outside the state. And early in the disease is when you can sometimes detect the pathogen. So you get bit by that tick within a few days, if you manage to collect the specimen then, and if there's enough organisms circulating, then you can do a direct test for the pathogen, which is called a PCR. Problem is, most people don't see a physician that early. And the second wave of tests, those are serology-based tests, so they're looking for your exposure to the disease and frequently those don't become positive for at least 30 days or so. So you, as Commissioner mentioned, you got to be very careful on the timing. The other issue is everybody reacts slightly differently to exposure to Lyme and the Lyme agent itself is not the best one to cause a reaction in humans. So the tests that we have have improved. There's certainly a lot of room for further improvement in them.
But they are becoming more accurate, you think?
In general, more accurate, but I'm not going to sit here and say they're perfect.
One of the problems we have, like Ron mentioned, is with providers in some ways and provider education has always been a challenge with regards to this. So with regards to antibody tests, for example, I mean, it takes time for your body to wind up developing antibodies. If you go into your physician's office and you have that bullseye rash, that develops very quickly after the tick bite. It may develop more quickly than the antibody result, than the antibodies can wind up kicking in. So one of the issues is trying to have that physician trust their eyes and basically say, this is a bullseye rash, this is Lyme disease, we know you were bitten by a tick. Oftentimes, you will wind up with physicians who will trust the test result sometimes more than they trust their eyes and you may wind up saying that, oh, the test result says you're negative and then they may discontinue antibiotics, which turns into a problem as we discussed a question ago. That's the, that's one of the problems or the challenges that we've faced over the years with trying to get good provider education out. The Commissioner recently did a letter to physicians across the state, basically kind of outlining information about ticks and tick-borne diseases. But getting, knowing when to, knowing not just how to test, but when to test is also really important with regards to, with regards to getting a good kind of accurate test for Lyme disease and in some cases, keeping someone on that early treatment while you maybe can test again a little bit later on down the road instead of saying, oh, the test is negative, you must not have Lyme disease.
That seems to be the protocol that should be followed pretty much as the antibiotics for a little bit longer to see if they're-
Or at least getting a person back in for subsequent testing, which, you know, sometimes is a challenge as well. I mean, one of the, one of the challenges with the vaccine that, that was pulled from the market in the early 2000s was it was a three-dose vaccine. You know, you had to have somebody come in at the beginning and then a month later and then 18 months after that. And having someone come back in, either to give another blood sample or to come back in and get a second or third dose of vaccine when that was available, can be really difficult when people have, you know, when they're feeling well or when they have other responsibilities. Trying to get them in to get the full regimen of either testing or at the time vaccination can be really difficult.
Right. And one of the issues that we had at the end of the legislative session was on the summer camps and we worked with your department very well and I think we came to a good outcome so that parents could send a pesticide spray, not pesticide, but mosquito spray, if that's the right word, anyway, with their children with permission to have it and the camp could use one as well if the parents signed off. So I haven't heard from anyone that it didn't work, but is there actually a best practice spray or something? We've had people call the office with some kind of spray, you could last for five or six days and I just don't know what to tell people or what, you know.
So there are a number of different products on the market that are marketed as repellents for both ticks and mosquitoes, but there really are only four active ingredients that are approved by FDA, endorsed by CDC and therefore endorsed by us as well. Those are DEET, picaridin, oil of lemon eucalyptus, and IR-3535, which was the active ingredient in what used to be Avon Skin So Soft, now it's, I think, Avon Bug Guard. I think they transmit, they give it to some other manufacturers now as well. There are a number of other products out there that just don't meet the, kind of the qualifications for lasting as long or being as effective as they possibly can. The one thing I didn't mention also is repellent impregnated clothes. That's another thing that can be done, either, you know, applying a spray to shoes or buying clothes that are already impregnated and those seem to work quite well. Again, they work probably a little better on mosquitoes than they do on ticks, but they certainly provide a layer of protection against ticks. There was a time at one point that EPA was going to kind of change some of the labels on, particularly on DEET products, because they can be a little bit confusing as you try and look at the microscopic handwriting to try and figure out either what percentage it is or what the actual active ingredient it is. But, but that new labeling hasn't come to pass quite yet.
And just quickly, the third thing, you know, I know we always send a lot of public service TV ads anti-smoking and each year there's money allocated to the Health Department for that. I would like to see, and maybe I've missed them and you're doing them, is TV ads that try to educate people a little bit better about ticks and what to watch for and how to take care of them, especially with the pulocin thing where we had people die.
So we are, we are doing that and I think that the way we're tackling this a little bit is also changing the way social media is today and to reach particularly those who are younger through more of these devices and other information, web-based approaches. So we are tackling it. It comes back to what we were talking about before, a lot of this is education, education of parents, education of children, education of health providers, as well as camp counselors and anyone who is involved in the, in the potential exposure to ticks. So we are working on that on multiple fronts and we are out there and we ramp that up obviously during the season, but throughout the year.
And we really haven't found any way to get rid of the ticks, right?
Getting, well, yeah, I mean, we get that question a fair amount. I mean, and getting rid of, doing tick control is much more difficult than doing mosquito control. You know, people are, the most, the type of insect control that people are familiar with or is there are things like mosquito control where chemicals are dropped from planes or, or, you know, like termite control where someone basically comes to your house and will wind up spraying your house, for example. There's no good area-wide control for ticks, which is, can be really frustrating. I get that. There are a number of approaches that are always kind of, that people are trying, but again, they don't necessarily have the, it's really tough to do a, you know, a control for something the size of Central Park, for example, to do, you know, tick control in something like that.
Or the adirondacks.
Right, exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just before I have Senator Helming speak, we're going to hear from Dr. Rick Osfield later. They're doing a tick project in Dutchess County with treating different properties, Betty, that they're going to see what works.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Helming?
I want to thank you so much for being here. I've learned quite a bit already this morning, so thank you very much for the information. On the subject of messaging for the purposes of educating folks and prevention, I'm just curious. I agree, I think Senator Serino referred to it earlier about, you know, just thinking that people are going to go to a website to find information. That's so much different than, as Senator Little suggested, TV commercials, which are fed to people. I, I think we need to do more of those proactive type of outreach. And in my area, I represent the Finger Lakes area, I have to be honest, I haven't seen a lot of that and I'm just wondering how much of that boils down to the availability of funding and if you have any thoughts on the state budget or funding for education, prevention, and research?
So we, first, I agree that as many media approaches we can use is always helpful. So TV, media, radio, web, it's all, is helpful. We will work on all that. We appreciate what the Senate has done to give us money. I know we've had $400,000 last year and similar amounts in the past three to four years prior to that. And we work closely with, with both the CDC, we've had money from CDC, there's a five-year, $10 million grant or money that we're getting from there and additional money. So we do have resources to move forward and we continue to push forward on that.
So I guess I still, adequate resources for what needs to be done?
We have, yes, we have the resources to keep moving forward and as things come up, we will be happy to work with you further and if there's something that comes up that we need, I'll be glad to address that as well.
Thank you. Another quick question on the accuracy of the tests that are available in New York State. I've heard from several constituents who feel that there are more accurate tests that are available outside of New York State. Do you have any thoughts on that? And also you mentioned about, someone did about the importance of going back to be retested or subsequent testing. And what I hear from constituents is, I think, I believe Senator Tedesco was referring to it, is insurance companies and their hesitation to pay for that subsequent or retesting.
Right. So on the, on the testing, as I mentioned before, that there are tests, there are labs outside of New York State that are running these, but, but we approve those labs. So in effort, if they're going to test individuals that are from New York and so New York State, our Wadsworth lab will, will make sure that the test is acceptable and meets their standards. So even if someone says, well, there are tests elsewhere, those labs are, we'll work with those labs. Regarding coverage, yes, we need to continue to make sure that there is coverage for, for this.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up with the testing issue and in my experience, I've not seen any test that's not available in New York State that would be better than what's available here. We get a number of different proposals from time to time. We ask that they're supported by data and hard evidence and we evaluate this carefully with a number of experts. And so there have been a few that we have not approved because we lack the data that shows that it was effective and we're concerned about people's health. So yes, there's the, we do allow some out-of-state tests that can interpret things a little differently than we do and that's something because there's so much issues with testing that we want to make sure we don't totally ignore possible advances. But in general, no, you can get everything you can right here.
Okay, thank you.
And before I have Senator Laval ask a question, I just wanted to say thank you to my colleague, Senator Hanen, for fighting for money in the budget. You know, we're only given so much and it's a struggle because we need so much more, but he's my champion and I appreciate everything that he's done for us with the, because it takes the dollars for the research, right? Senator Laval?
It's a perfect segue for me, my question. And Commissioner, there's something you can do, just you, and that builds on the questions of money. Suffolk County, we, you and I chatted briefly before, we're at an epidemic with Lyme and the eastern end of Long Island, I represent, I mean, it's incredible, the number of people that have Lyme or a member of their family. So I think we need to start off in the budget with a, with a good amount of money and I think that money is not only on some of the things that have been talked about in terms of public service notices and so forth, but research. It's a shame that we're not in the mix in terms of a vaccine here in New York State. On Long Island, we have a facility called Stony Brook and I know we have some leading scholars in this area and we should have the money to let us attack this thing full bore.
So a couple of things. One on the research, we are doing, we are doing a lot of research and in collaboration with our federal partners, but also in collaboration with other states and I'll have Brian speak about that in a second. Regarding also what you're mentioning about Long Island and vaccines and we'd be happy, particularly given that we have so many cases of Lyme disease, as one moves forward with a vaccine and it reaches the potential for a, the part of the trials or phase two of the trials, we'd be glad to be, participate in this to make sure that we help move this forward on a vaccine. But there are, there are many things that we are doing, both with that CDC and New York State, working together on this in the research front, but Brian, you could probably mention it.
Yeah, one of the things, so sticking with the New York State, one of the things that we did with, with funding provided by the task force was twice now, we've done small kind of research workshops, research conferences, day and a half in and around the Albany area where we got researchers who are working on ticks and tick-borne diseases in New York State. And what we tried to do is get everybody in a room and basically let everyone know that what everyone else does. There are many people who don't necessarily know that they have potential partners here within the state who could- within the state who could, who they could collaborate with. Or if somebody from Stony Brook, for example, wants to get their hands on ticks from Buffalo, for example, or patient samples from Buffalo, that there's another researcher who's out in Buffalo who has, who they can potentially wind up working with. So we've ran two of those. We hope to run another one relatively soon. Some good collaborations have come out of that where they, where researchers have basically tried to apply for additional federal funding for particular projects. It's also allowed people to think about partners that they maybe didn't realize before. We tend to think about some of the big groups, the places like Stony Brook and Columbia and Cornell and so forth, but we don't necessarily think about maybe some of the smaller partners out there that may be available. Paul Smith College, for example, is someone who we've worked really, really closely with. Even some smaller community colleges have been a godsend with regards to being able to, you know, help us out with regards to, you know, sets of hands to collect ticks in areas, to try and collect as many as we possibly can to be able to test so we'll know more about tick infectivity and potential risk in areas around the state. The Commissioner mentioned a little bit earlier about this CDC grant that we got in collaboration with Cornell and Columbia University and the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station. We're one of four in the country that are, have been deemed regional centers of excellence for vector-borne diseases. And the goal with that is to basically try, there's two main goals with regard to that particular project, five-year project. One is to try and train new individuals to be able to do this type of research and be able to respond in the future to tick and mosquito-borne diseases. The other is to try and do basic applied research, research that can get answers relatively quickly, to be able to, you know, not necessarily do research that begets more research, that begets more research. There's nothing wrong with that, but it basically trying to do things that can be kind of implemented relatively shortly after the research is done. What's the best way to catch this particular species of tick? What's the best way to get ticks out of your lawn? Are some of the products that are being marketed to people, do they really work or not? To be able to kind of apply good research principles to some of these things, to be able to make an impact kind of as quickly as possible.
I will also add that we're also one of only six states in the nation that CDC, we're part of TICNET, which is collaborative projects with the CDC, looking at some of the future of things that we can do to tackle this.
Just one quick addition is that Wadsworth anyway, we have hired a tick-borne Lyme person to do basic research on ticks and we are certainly looking to expand that effort as well.
So I use the word epidemic and I wasn't cavalier about it, but in terms of my district, which is eastern Long Island, that's all people talk about. You know, you have cancer, heart disease, and Lyme disease. And so as representative, I have to feel that we're really attacking this problem with enthusiasm. Now, I don't know whether physicians are just even keel and politicians always get hyper about things, but in terms of my own district, I think we need to ratchet up what we're doing.
So I will say that we're attacking from the state level. We are attacking it with a lot of enthusiasm to make sure we get this under control and work with what we need to do. And as Brian mentioned, I did send a letter out to all the health providers around the state last month to address this and I will personally also raise it when I go out to the regions where this is a concern, if I'm talking about other things unrelated to this, but raise the awareness and make sure that the people are aware. And we are going to also have one of our commissioners' rounds about some of these issues in the spring as well.
Think big for the budget.
Okay.
Senator Amador has a question as well.
Thank you, Senator Serino. Commissioner, thank you for being here and gentlemen, for your question, your answers to our questions. No question that as Senator Laval brought it up and he used the word epidemic, I represent parts of the Hudson Valley, Capital Region, and the Mohawk Valley Region. This is a huge problem. My constituents battle it physically, emotionally, and financially. Tick-borne diseases, Lyme disease, and they're so frustrated. We battle this, another problem, another epidemic with addiction. And we liken that epidemic of multi-pronged approach, which you've mentioned, Commissioner, and prevention and treatment. Do you really think, or first off, the question would be, how much federal help are we really receiving in the state to battle this issue?
So with regards to that, as I mentioned, we are working closely with CDC, the $5 million, the five-year, $10 million grant, the issues, as I mentioned, TICNET, the collaborative projects that we're working on with them. But we'll also work with our partners, both at the FDA, when it comes to a possible vaccine and what we can do to move through phase, phase one, phase two, well, mainly phase two, phase three trials. We're also working with NIH, if there's any new research out there. Wadsworth Lab works closely with the National Institutes of Health. So if something new is going to be on the horizon, we will be a part of it, particularly given our lab. So we are, and we talked to HHS, the overarching body for all of those agencies as well regarding this, and I have a meeting coming up with our Region Two Director for HHS and I will bring this up as well with them to make sure that this is on the radar.
So I'm sure you would agree with me that we definitely need more federal funding and help on this issue.
Well, there's always, I mean, this is, even though it's, we're here in New York, this is obviously something which is across the country, so it becomes a national issue and the federal government needs to continue to tackle it as well.
On this state, I know as a state initiative and the help of Senator Serino, Senator Hanon, that in the short tenure that I've been a senator, there has been an increase in funding. And as a member of the task force, there's been about a million and a half dollar increase in a short period of time. That goes to prevention and it goes to other efforts that we have. Probably not enough. I think I hear you say that you may have enough, but you need, I would say that you need more. I know we need more and a lot of efforts for the multi-pronged approach, if that's the approach that you're taking and the focus you have, because awareness and educational efforts alone is, takes a lot of resources and there's a lot of different media outlets and sources that you could use to educate adults all the way down to children. But in the preventive efforts, what else new is there, can we do? When we talk about pest management for property owners that we've seen to pass in the Senate multiple times, but yet can't really get the Assembly on board with type of legislation, that's a preventative measure. What else can we do to have the Department of Health help the state of New York along here?
Well, I think we work across agencies because there are some of the things we're doing with Deere and Brian, you could talk a little bit about the four-pillar approach and some of the other things we do to prevent, to try to tackle the issue with ticks and try to decrease the potential exposure. There are other things that some of the research out there to try to change, make sure the ticks aren't as infective, don't spread the infection. We are also, when it comes to education, I think we have to be creative a little bit and that's what we're looking at. What are the other ways to tackle this and getting education out there, messaging, whether it's, sometimes it's not just resources from the standpoint of money, it's messaging and getting more people engaged and getting it to be a more, people to be more aware. As a doctor, I could tell you, sometimes what happens is someone's not thinking about it as a possible diagnosis, although on eastern Long Island, I'm sure all the doctors are, but if someone's not thinking about it, then it may not be something that rises to the differential diagnosis. And so we have to get that, that's an education issue, it's not even really a money issue, it's more of communication. So we're working on that. You want to talk about some of the?
So we mentioned dogs a little while ago and one of the things that people are familiar with with regards to their dogs is, A, being able to vaccinate them and in some cases, being able to treat them with regards to, you know, like a Frontline or an Advantix type of thing where you put something on and the dog's protected for roughly a month or so. There are certain approaches that are being used to try and do that same type of thing, but for mice and for deer. One of the things that people sometimes don't necessarily realize is that mice are really the bad culprit with regards to Lyme disease. That's where the ticks wind up picking up the bacterial infection, they pick it up from mice. So one of the things that we've, that has been approached over time is to try and create a kind of an automated system, if you will, so that mice can go into boxes and sort of dose themselves with a product that's like a Frontline or an Advantix that basically will keep ticks off them or try and then keep, won't necessarily kill the ticks, but it'll keep them freer of pathogens. There are approaches that are similar to that, that are being discussed. I don't know that they're necessarily quite ready yet, but basically an approach to kind of vaccinate mice, if you will, but using an oral, an edible vaccine that you could potentially spread in parks and so forth. There's an edible rabies vaccine that some of you may have heard about that USDA is using right now along our northern border. And it would be a somewhat similar approach in the sense that there's a, you know, like a, it's almost like a dog kibble that mice and other small mammals can potentially eat. It won't do anything for the tick population, but it will basically try and keep that tick population less infected than it was before. There are a number of issues that have to be kind of broached with regards to these. Whenever you're applying, you know, chemicals to wildlife, be it in the form of something you apply to their coat or something that they wind up eating, you want to make sure that they're safe, both for the animals themselves and for, you know, kids who can wind up, you know, coming up to one of these bait boxes or they, you know, wind up seeing, you know, this kind of dog food in a field, so to speak. So those types of things have to get addressed, but those are some of the approaches that are being discussed. They're, they're something that could certainly be undertaken at a kind of a wider scale than currently is available for a lot of tick-borne disease control.
And Senator Little had a follow-up question.
Yeah, if I could, just one more question. I have seen a lot of signs this year and there was one at the golf course I play at Saturday, you know, avoiding ticks and I think everyone contributed a lot of balls to the woods that day rather than going to find them. But in many of the pictures and the information cards, it shows the tick and the little teeny tiny tick. Do any of them show the engorged ticks so that people could learn to?
Well, the main reason we do it?
Find out whether this is a tick that's really gotten into them yet?
Yeah, the main reason we do it, the way we, the way we do those with regards to the signs and the ID cards and so forth, is to try and get it so that people recognize them before they get engorged. You know, we want them to notice them as soon as they possibly can so they can pull them off, pull them off the right way, before they wind up getting to be the size of a pea or the size of a grape, at which point the damage is sort of, you know, is perhaps done already. So whenever we wind up doing those signs or whatnot, we really try and emphasize this is what it looks like. Try and get your eye trained for what a, you know, a small tick may look like as it's crawling on your clothes or crawling on your skin. You know, I, we go out in the field and we wind up catching ticks. We drag for ticks every single year, like the Commissioner said, a couple of times a year. And it's funny how your eye sort of gets trained once you wind up seeing, you know, one or two on this particular drag and you bring, you know, a student or you bring a new employee out for the first time and it takes them a little bit of time before they sort of catch on. And once they finally get the, train their eye to see what that tick looks like, then they wind up seeing it every single time. And that's kind of the reasoning behind making those ticks sort of actual size before they wind up getting engorged, so that you can see them, spot them, get a sense of that's what this thing looks like, so that you can remove it before it has a chance to really engorge and potentially give you whatever it may be carrying.
But once they've been bitten, they ought to be able to identify an engorged tick too, to know this one?
They actually become, I mean, if you're talking about identifying them just as a tick, I would agree, but identifying them as a deer tick or identifying them as another kind of tick, that actually gets much more difficult the more swollen they are and the more stretched out they are. It actually becomes much more difficult to actually identify what kind of tick it is once they've been on for a week.
Okay. Well, thank you.
And I just have a follow-up question too, because we talked about federal funding. How much federal funding have we gotten for the Zika virus?
I'd have to check on that exact amount, but I'll get that back to you.
Okay, because I thought I heard 25 million, but we haven't, I don't believe have had a general case that's been originated in New York State, of course, where it's a, it's a terrible disease, terrible virus. But here, we've had Lyme disease, as you know, I'm preaching to the choir, but it all comes back to the dollars. So I think, you know, going forward, you know, we're all cognizant of that too.
I hear you on that and I can get you the number on that, but also I think, I think as we were talking about before, it is working with many different agencies on this, not DOH, because it's parks, DEC, education, there's so many different departments that we can work with and also funds from.
Good, thank you, Commissioner.
As you're doing the work with the CDC grant, I, first of all, there's some exciting things there because to come up with surveillance report and a plan, which I think is overdue. I mean, we have it for West Nile, we spent a lot of time looking at Zika and Ebola, but we haven't done it for ticks and it's persistent probably because we thought we wouldn't have to continue to deal with this. But it's there, it's getting bigger and the CDC, I know in different times, they were the ones when we ran short of vaccine for flu, actually encouraged industry and funded industry to come up with alternative sources. So that to the extent we can try to make sure that this is a pointed picture and focus, maybe they can help on the vaccine. Relying on one company in Europe really is kind of a shallow type of response. And I know it's not something the state does usually, but this is unusual. Senator Serino had mentioned about the Zika, we had one case and with, you know, yet it gets all sorts of attention. We just had the other day on Long Island, they found one mosquito with EEE, Eastern Encephalitis, Eastern Equine Encephalitis. Well, they called it in the newspaper report, a public health hazard. One mosquito, didn't even get to people yet. So now we're dealing with 8,000 cases a year of Lyme. And I think that we just really have to underline what, where we're going. And then also I think we really need to, as you're doing your plan to help out the providers and to help out with people having to evaluate the tests, because as you outlined, the test is not always giving the same results at the same time in terms of it's being dealt with by the human body. So that needs, that needs to be set out as an evidence-based protocol so people can have a better handle. Because people complain, well, my provider, my doctor didn't diagnose it. Well, if they're not getting support from the tests, you know, they're really being asked to do a lot of difficult things. So I would hope that as we go forward, we could even that out, testing and then what the provider should be doing. But the vaccine would be really the key. If we can entice CDC to do that, that would be really key.
We'll work with CDC, you know, the new CDC Director is a former state health commissioner, so has probably had to deal with, even though it's in a different area of this, the country, she's probably had to deal with a lot of issues and recognizes the challenges that when you're trying to improve things for a state. So I will bring that up with her as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're joined by Senator Bonisic. Thank you, Senator Bonisic. Commissioner, I'd like to say thank you very much for coming today. I know how busy everybody is, but you know how critically important this hearing is today. Brian, thank you very much, as always. Dr. Lindberger, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We can take the other one, thank you.
Yep, we can take the other one, thank you. Now, we're going to be joined by the County Department of Health panel, and we have Andrew Evans from Dutchess County, Jean Ralston from Putnam County, and Marion Yurden from Brum County. So, thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
And there's a fourth person.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm Erin Rae Pascaretti from the Putnam County Department of Health.
Oh, great, thank you, thank you very much, Erin.
We never know how they put them forward.
Okay, um, and who's gonna, are you gonna start, Andrew?
Yeah, I'll start.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to thank the New York State Department's Senate Task Force on Lyme Disease and Tick-Borne Disease and the Senate Standing Committee on Health for extending an invitation to the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health to testify on the support in health matter. Tick-Borne disease is a high-priority health concern, both in New York State and specifically in Dutchess County. Tick-Borne disease creates a significant burden of disease that impacts our local residents, healthcare providers, government officials, and other partners. Lyme disease has been hyperendemic in Dutchess County since 1986. In the early 90s, when I began doing Lyme disease surveillance, connected through traditional mail, telephone calls, and visits of the providers, offices of review of medical records. I actually do recall being surrounded by thousands of papers around me about three foot high. Eventually, technology came online to allow us to receive lab reports electronically. Over time, this resulted in such high numbers of Lyme disease case investigations that it became impossible for us to maintain New York State reporting standards. In response to the need, Dutchess County and other Hudson Valley counties, the New York State Department of Health created a Sentinel Surveillance System based on 10 years of Dutchess County data for Lyme disease. Under the Sentinel Surveillance System, estimated Lyme disease case numbers for Dutchess County are determined from investigation of a randomized 20% sample of all positive Lyme disease laboratory reports. And currently, with more than 4,000 estimated cases since 2009, our county experiences disease rates two to three times greater than that of other, other areas of New York State. Lyme disease is not the only tick-borne disease impacting our county. Since the late 1990s, we have also experienced the emergence of increasing incidence of anaplasmosis and babesiosis. Between 2003 to 2015, rates of babesiosis increased from 2.1 cases per 100,000 residents to 25.3 cases per 100,000 residents. And anaplasmosis and ehrlichiosis during the same time period increased from 2.2 cases per 100,000 to 30.1 cases per 100,000. Dutchess County annual incidence rates for anaplasmosis and babesiosis are approximately four to five times higher than the New York State average. Dutchess County periodically conducts surveys to assess the knowledge, attitude, and behaviors of our constituent community. Survey findings inform our, inform our efforts to efficiently and effi-, efficiently, effectively target limited resource gaps, to gaps identified. The numbers I have just described in our surveillance data are born out of the high level of concern expressed by our residents regarding Lyme and other tick-borne disease in our 2015 to 16 tick-borne disease community survey. In this survey, more than 90% of county respondents expressed that Lyme disease is a serious problem in Dutchess County. Concerningly, this survey also found significant disparities in perceived knowledge of Lyme disease based on gender, race, and education level. Local health departments are the boots on the ground in the provision of disease surveillance and control and dissemination of prevention, education to healthcare providers and community residents. Despite waning financial and personnel resources and numerous competing health priorities, we at Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health have continued to recognize the significant impact of tick-borne disease. This is evidenced in our inclusion of tick-borne disease prevention as one of three community health improvement goals in our communities, in our county's community health improvement plan. The plan includes three strategies to address gaps, tick-borne disease, and tick-borne disease prevention efforts in Dutchess County, all of which would be greatly enhanced for provision of additional resources. One, the first strategy is toward the use of emerging technologies, including electronic medical records, to make surveillance case numbers more representative of the actual burden of disease in our county. In collaboration with our regional health information organization, the department is piloting enhanced real-time surveillance of Lyme disease through electronic medical record data, which would allow for automatic reporting of cases that are diagnosed based on clinical symptoms alone. By streamlining our case investigation through automation, we hope to also be able to reduce the burden of reporting on providers. We believe that additional resources would greatly expand the effectiveness and longevity of this initiative. The second strategy is targeted outreach to populations most at risk, such as outdoor workers, summer camp staff, or traditionally underserved populations. These efforts are critical based on disparities and overall low levels of penetration of educational efforts detected in the 2015 to 2016 tick-borne disease community survey. For example, the survey found that only 7% of survey respondents had attended a department educational presentation on tick-borne disease prevention. Think how many more it could have reached with even more resources. Not only could more resources allow us to expand traditional print media and community outreach efforts, they would allow educational programs to adapt to the current communication technologies and information sharing. Whereas now, we have website, have a website and posts on social media, with more resources, these efforts could become full, a full-blown digital media marketing campaign. The third strategy is the formation of a work group of key community partners to better address the problem of tick-borne disease through collaboration and sharing of resources. This strategy was included because we know our department cannot do it alone. This is much, there is much more work to be done. Our recent survey demonstrated that 98% of Dutchess County residents are aware of Lyme disease. However, only one-third know a lot about the disease. In the first six months, the educational efforts of our department and other work group member organizations have reached approximately 15,000 Dutchess County residents. While we're proud of what we have accomplished, we live in a county with a population of nearly 300,000, and we know that more funding is required to significantly increase our outreach. In my 28 years of work in public health, I've witnessed the surge of tick-borne disease, tick-borne disease diagnosis and the resultant impact of acute and chronic health conditions on the quality of life for our residents and visitors. I firmly believe that strategic investments in public health, including funding targeted to surveillance, education, and prevention, will not only improve the health of Dutchess County residents, but it will also improve the health of individuals throughout New York State. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. We give the state health department money every year to have an annual Lyme meeting. Do you find this to be helpful?
I, I find it, I find it very helpful. A lot of the ideas that we bring back is from collaborating with our, our fellow local county health departments and the state to give us expertise. So, we, it's a really good sharing of ideas. And, you know, in the past, you know, as budgets went down, we weren't allowed to like get together, it was either through webinars or something like that. I've found that like these physical meetings where we're together, it actually emerges innovative and new ideas that we can bring back and apply to our local efforts.
I agree with you, and I think the next question I was gonna ask you, I could probably answer myself after all of this today, is how can the state better empower you to tackle the issue of Lyme and tick-borne disease? And I think it all comes back to dollars for research, and I don't know if you have anything else that you wanted to add beyond your testimony?
Like, like I said, it's in, in the testimony, is that it's additional resources. As you know, we have, you know, we have 80, if I work in communicable disease controls, a bunch of us do, we have 80-plus different pathogens plus whatever the new one that is, has arrived on the scene that we have to put our focus in on.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's a, we have limited resources to this, and that's why we've tried to be innovative, to do the best that we can with what we have. And we're always looking for, like, like I said, adding the chip to, as part of tick-borne disease, which is not a normal purview of the chip, is, is very helpful, to look for resources in the community that may be also, be all, already be doing something about this.
Right, good, thank you. Senator Han?
I'm, I'm excited by the fact you're gonna use your statistics and put them into your regional health information system. And I don't know how far along you've, you've gone with that, but I would hope that you'd be able to also share the methodology and, and all with the other regional information systems, so we can start to see how we can make this more of a, an assistance to the medical community than, than more than just keeping statistics.
Right. Yeah, and, yes, we are, it's, it's in its beginning stages, and we are, we always share, you know, our best practice, we would share with the state, so it could be spread throughout the, the other counties.
Great.
Did you want to add something? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add, as far as the Rio goes, the Hudson Valley, Rio, we, seven counties in Hudson Valley meet frequently with them, and part of what Dutchess, their idea with the, the Lyme project has actually expanded, and we're trying to use it in other areas as well.
Excellent.
So, we do, in fact, use it for other-
Yeah, we've been talking to them, trying to do things like heroin recovery from heroin overdoses and all of that, so we can just use it as a proactive tool. But this is, I didn't, I didn't think about that you could use it for Lyme, and yet it, that's, that's why it's a great prospect.
And Senator Bonisic?
Yeah. I don't know if I'm directing it to the right panel, but, and I apologize when Dr. Zucker spoke. I know that, is there a spray that we could spray in those geographical areas where we know there's a heavy concentration of ticks that would kill them? I mean, farmers use spraying to kill certain bugs. We control the deer population by doing certain things that we dropped for birth control, but is there a spray or a ingredient that would kill ticks if we dropped it in a certain area, if anybody knows?
I would say, probably the previous panel would have been better to address that question. But I, I also would say that Dr. Osfeld is taking it later, and he would probably know a lot about that as well.
Dr. Osfeld from the Corey Institute, probably worked with you, and he'd be directly be able to respond to it.
Yeah, I apologize for that question for this panel.
Did anyone else from the panel have a question? Yep, okay, all right, then we'll go on to Jean. Thank you.
Good morning, Senator Serino, Senator Hanon, and distinguished committee members. Thank you for inviting Putnam County Department of Health here today to discuss the important topic of tick-borne illness, including Lyme disease. My name is Jean Ralston, and I am a public health nurse, and I work in communicable disease at the Putnam County Department of Health, and this is Erin Rae Pascaretti, our epidemiologist. Part of my work, my daily work is to investigate the tick-borne illness laboratory reports received in Putnam. We see if they fit the case, the CDC case definition. Ultimately, cases are created, and Erin works with the staff to identify trends and changes in disease patterns. I am here today to tell you more about Putnam County's numbers and to discuss our efforts and strategies that we believe help the residents of Putnam County. The incidence of tick-borne diseases in Putnam County has been increasing over the past 10 years. In early 2000, Lyme disease was the primary focus of most tick-borne investigations. However, this has expanded to include anaplasmosis, babesiosis, and ehrlichiosis. Less common are Powassan and Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever. Anaplasmosis, babesiosis, ehrlichiosis, and Powassan all have lower incidence rates than Lyme disease. Lyme, babesiosis, anaplasmosis, and ehrlichiosis are all considered endemic in New York State, meaning that these diseases are regularly found in the local tick and human population. Putnam County is considered a Lyme endemic county, therefore, only 20% of all Lyme laboratory reports are investigated. Since 2011, Lyme disease incidence is extrapolated from the sample of these investigated results. This means that the exact burden of Lyme disease is not known, only estimated. In the past five years, Putnam County has had one of the highest Lyme disease incident rates within New York State excluding New York City. For the past four years, Columbia, Green, Putnam, and Rensselaer have been the counties with the highest Lyme disease incidence. Specifically, Putnam County has had a rate nearly five times greater than that, than the New York State rate excluding New York City. Powassan virus is also transmitted to humans by infected ticks. Named after the town in Ontario, Canada, where it was first described in 1958, Powassan is a potentially deadly with a 10% fatality rate. Powassan, in comparison to other tick-borne illnesses, is a rare disease. Powassan cases in Putnam County have fluctuated over the past 10 years, during which Putnam County cases represented 37% of the New York State total and 9% of the United States' total cases. In 2013, Putnam County cases accounted for 60% of the cases in New York State and 20% of the cases in the United States. As the data in your package shows, Putnam County residents are at an increased risk for acquiring tick-borne illnesses. Research is vital, and we applaud all efforts currently being made to investigate methods of reduction of tick-borne disease transmission. Our primary role is surveillance, and in Putnam County, we feel our limited resources are best spent on education. Putnam County Department of Health has focused on educating providers, the community at large, and our Department of Health staff. We need our providers to be aware of the latest trends in our state, the latest testing methods, and the importance of aiding the Department of Health in the process of investigating and reporting cases. In June, Putnam County Department of Health sent a blast fax to our providers to educate them about preferred testing for tick-borne illnesses, and to remind providers that the Putnam County Department of Health will be contacting their offices to investigate many of these cases. This fax also encouraged providers to report a patient with an erythema migrans rash. These patients count as a confirmed Lyme, Lyme case, and yet often do not have any laboratory work drawn. We rely on providers to report these cases directly to the Department of Health. We suspect that Lyme is underreported, due in part to, to the few cases of EM rash that are reported. On July 20th, 2017, New York State Department of Health released an advisory regarding Powassan virus. This summary included a description of the differential diagnosis and the appropriate testing that would be indicated. Putnam County Department of Health informed all providers in Putnam County of this advisory. At Putnam County Department of Health, we are changing our message to include all tick-borne illnesses. This includes Lyme disease and others such as anaplasmosis, babesiosis, ehrlichiosis, and Powassan virus. These are the tick-borne illnesses of today. They will no doubt change over time, and other illnesses will be added to this list as ticks from more southern and western regions make their way to our area. We believe due to our efforts, education, our education efforts this season, we have seen an increase in tick-borne illnesses other than Lyme, Powassan, and Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever that have been reported. Putnam County Department of Health has a strong emphasis on prevention. By preventing a tick bite, we can potentially prevent disease. By removing a tick as soon as it is found, the risk of some diseases can be reduced. All members of our community, from the kindergartners to the seniors, need to hear these important messages. Putnam County Department of Health participates in numerous community events. We are in the schools, at the work site wellness events, at the senior centers, and at the health fairs. We talk about preventing tick bites by wearing protective clothing and using insect repellent. The New York State Department of Health brochures are extremely helpful, as well as their YouTube videos. How to do a tick check, the removal of a tick, is another topic we repeat at every event. The New York State Department of Health YouTube tick removal video is a quick, informative, and easy guide. The tick kits are invaluable, and we hand them out at every event. And I did bring one for every, so that each of you could have a tick removal kit today. Reviewing signs and symptoms of tick-borne illnesses with members of our community and when to call their provider is always emphasized. At Putnam County Department of Health, our messaging includes all tick-borne illnesses. The Lyme disease county learning collaborative held in Albany is a crucial learning experience. This collaborative discusses the complexity of interpreting laboratory reports and the finer points of completing an investigation. The continued funding of such collaborative events where all of us dealing with tick-borne illnesses can gather, hear from the experts, and exchange knowledge and strategies with our fellow coworkers from different counties in the state is vital for the accuracy of tick-borne surveillance. This knowledge is then disseminated to our local providers. Local public health departments are important for disease surveillance and the education of the community. In closing, the correct identification of tick-borne illnesses will lead to the true level of disease burden a county faces. Without this knowledge, we cannot find solutions, but with additional funding, we can do more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Jean, and thank you very much for these tick removal kits.
You're welcome.
You know, it's interesting, I had a veterinarian that I had met that was actually telling people the wrong method for their pets. They were smothering the tick to have them back out, which traumatizes, traumatizes a tick. So it's interesting, we do a Mythbuster forum online, in fact, Dr. Math Frye is here and some of my other panelists, to inform the public. And it's interesting, when you ask him a question, how many people really had misinformation? So, thank you very much for your testimony. And this is a question I had prior to hearing everybody speak, but is there anything different that you're doing in Putnam County that you could share, you know, with Dutchess or any other counties, or, that's probably something you guys already do at the annual meeting every year?
I do believe we are doing similar strategies across the state. The collaborative meeting where you can pick up new ideas is very helpful. All of the resources that New York State Department of Health provides, I just want everybody to know, we use them, and they are effective. And the more that can be provided to us, the more we will use them.
Excellent. Does anybody else have a question?
No, Broom County?
And then we have, yeah, we have Broom County now. Our next speaker on our list, Mary Ann. Yes, thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, some of us, some of the Hanon and the rest of Bill Aron, and the committee members, and the panelists. Thank you for having me here today. I have been in the communicable disease program in Broom County since 1999, so I also, like Andrew, have the advantage of firsthand experience with Lyme disease trending in our county.
I guess I was on before. This is better. Broom County has a population of about 197,000 right now, so that can give you perspective in regards to our counts that I've provided. In the early years, up to even 2007, all the patients I was able to reach for interview reported travel to an endemic area, usually the Hudson Valley or Connecticut, elsewhere, New Jersey, maybe. And our numbers were quite low, averaging about four cases per year. At the end of 2007, I interviewed the first person who denied any travel outside of Broom County, and I knew that at that point, the infected ticks had come to us. So, New York State Department of Health did testing of ticks in our state park in 2009, and then determined, when they tested adult ticks, or what they tested, that about 30% of the ticks were infected with Lyme disease. So that means that we then became an endemic county, which changes some of the rules on using prophylaxis and how you handle treatment and preventive treatment with people with Lyme disease. By 2011, we almost tripled our account, our count from 2010, and 2013, we more than tripled our case count. And 2016, which we just got the data recently, because we too now are a Sentinel County, we have been for a few years, and in 2016, our case count went up to 300, which is our highest. And this year seems to be exploding past that, although, being a Sentinel County, we won't have an actual count until later on in next season. So, it is likely, since 1999, we have had minimal reporting of other tick-borne diseases in Broom County. We have had a total of nine Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever, six ehrlichiosis, three babesiosis cases, and no anaplasmosis or powassan. But I know from experience that, again, it's just a matter of time. And changing gears to our public health response to tick-borne diseases, our distribution of tick-borne removal kits, which we also brought some for everyone, too, and ours look a little different than theirs, has been our most successful outreach effort in Broom County. People love them, and we can't get our hands on enough of them. They have educational materials, tweezers, instructions to remove the ticks. Currently costs us about a dollar a kit, and we distributed 5,100 tick removal kits in 2017 in a variety of ways, including daycares and schools. And in 2017, something new that we have done is we started using Facebook more to get our message out, and we actually targeted messaging into well-developed, I mean, well-established Facebook groups that already exist in our community, including Mommy &amp; Me group, who are very interested in our materials. And with one message, we could reach over 2,000 people that are part of that group. So we feel that the kind of targeting messaging on top of the, keeping our Facebook page up and running has been helpful. I wanted to talk a little bit about our collaboration. At Broom County Health Department, we're blessed to have an environmental health staff. Some of the smaller counties do not have. And we have great collaboration between my program in communicable disease and the environmental health staff, which allows us to educate both the medical community and the public as efficiently as possible. And we will go together to do various trainings where I concentrate more on the disease aspects, and my environmental health partner will concentrate more on the ticks, the habitats, the prevention. And we have also partnered with numerous organizations, such as Binghamton University, which is a great partner of ours, Co-Now Cooperative Extension, and Broom County Parks Department, to make Lyme disease prevention information readily available to the public. I did want to bring up with the annual Lyme disease conference, we have found that to be useful for both up-to-date training as well as collaboration with other local health departments, because as, as the others have said, we really do learn a lot from each other. And the actual face-to-face time with New York State Department of Health allows us to give feedback on any proposed changing in reporting procedures, so we can work much better face-to-face. To reduce the burden on local health departments, we would like to see more funding to New York State Department of Health, so they will always have the educational materials in stock that we can, you know, make the tick kits. But we paid for the tick kits ourselves, and we have very, very limited resources. And so, funding specifically for tick kits could be very helpful. When, I've been told by the environmental health staff, it's such a draw to get people, like if you're, if we're at an educational fair or something, such a draw, they want those kits, so then we have their attention and we can do the education. And funding for staffing at the local and regional level to help with disease follow-up, we, as I know Andrew brought up, we, we have so many diseases, and you're looking at the communicable disease staff at Broom County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I was just curious, how much does this, is it comparable in the price, or?
I don't do, I believe so.
Okay. See, and it comes back to more funding, so. I know when I first sent out brochures to the schools, when I first became the chair, we had, the schools and libraries asked us for thousands of more informational pamphlets, because the kids were taking them home to their parents. But when, if you heard me speak earlier, only about a third of the children in the classes are saying that they heard about Lyme or ticks. So, we need to improve there, which that is something that we're working on. Do you have a question?
First of all, Senator Serino and myself are the reason this Department of Health has the money to bring you together, because the idea was the best practices, knowing some of you are ground zero for this whole disease. But the second question I have is, where, where do you get them for a dollar? When you mentioned that, I looked it up on the internet, and Amazon has them for six and seven and higher, so.
Well, I think Amazon kind of increases prices on things.
Well, no question.
But, well, we were careful, it was carefully found, tweezers, of course, would be the most expensive part of it, and we found one that we thought was adequate. I was not involved in the process, but this is, it was a little more, it was like a dollar twelve, maybe. But, yeah, I don't know, you'll have to check with my environmental health department.
We'll follow up with Putnam and with Broom, and that's, that's somewhat of an easy thing. It may come out with the Department of Health's name on it, but that's okay.
Oh, we're happy for whatever we can get from, from the state health department and you folks.
Senator Helming has a question?
Yes, first of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you for being here and for all of your work as county leaders. I came from county department myself. I know how creative people can be at the county level. You identify needs and you find a way to address those needs, you don't let anything stand in your way. So I want to, again, thank you for that. My question is, there was discussion about partnerships with other agencies and organizations and collaboration with others. And I'm just curious, is there any collaboration or work with mental health providers or county mental health departments? More and more, I'm hearing from constituents, I think there was just an article in the Pocahontas Journal, possibly about the link, the potential link between Lyme and tick-borne disease and mental health issues.
I can speak to that. Recently, me and my coworker Allison were invited to our, our mental hygiene department to, because of that particular issue in the paper, and we were able to educate them, and they were able to ask us questions, and they want to invite us back, not just for that, more of that, but for other disease issues as well, communicable disease issues.
That's great.
In Putnam County, because of our community health improvement planning, although unlike Dutchess, we don't have Lyme disease as a priority, we have suicide prevention and the opioid epidemic, but because of those links, we have made quite a few new partnerships, and through that, we actually get many calls, we get invited to actually make presentations and educate staff.
Excellent. Did anybody else have a question from the panel? Okay. No. Well, Erin, did you have anything else to add, or, because I know, we didn't have you on here?
I was slightly moral support.
Okay.
There are questions that Jean couldn't answer because of my health education background.
Good, and thank you. And Dutchess and Putnam, of course, is part of my district, so I really appreciate all of you being here today and helping spread the word and pass the information along. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank you, Senator Hanon, and the rest of the members of committee for having me. And I am a clinician, I've been in practice diagnosing and treating Lyme for 30 years, dealing with patients, and it's amazing, the stories and compelling stories you hear.
Hold the mic closer.
That good? Okay. And the things that patients go through, also, as membership chairman of ILAD, I interview doctors who are applying to ILAD, and one of the biggest things I find is, these doctors are joining because they're treating patients conventionally, and people aren't getting better than they get it or their family gets it, and they see the disability and the prolongation of the illness that Lyme could do, and they, and they join ILAD for the educational purposes. And because the guidelines that have been in force are really outdated, and ILAD has new guidelines that are on National Guideline Clearinghouse website. I want to give the mission statement of ILAD, because I think it fits in with the task force. It's to improve physician understanding of Lyme disease, to view and develop and implement programs and embrace the management of Lyme disease and associated diseases, meaning co-infections, viruses, bartonella, et cetera, to advance the standards of care for Lyme disease and its associated diseases, and to review, develop, and implement programs for educating physicians and other healthcare providers. I wrote a little thing on ILAD's guidelines, just for you to look at. I think it's really imperative that we educate physicians on the concepts of Lyme disease. Knowing new concepts on the diagnosis and treatment of Lyme disease will give them a wider perspective in dealing with the many complications and the many difficult symptoms that patients have. ILAD does offer a fundamental course to physicians that's given on the day before our annual conference. I want to talk about some of the diagnoses, so you have an idea of, and people have alluded to it. I want to give a case because it deals with what Senator Hemling and Senator Serino said. I had a 15-year-old young lady brought to me by her parents. She had a year and a quarter, she was an A student, and she had depression, severe depression, on four medicines, followed by a psychiatrist. I made the diagnosis of Lyme. She was positive for ehrlichia, positive for bartonella, but negative for Lyme. But I treated her with IV antibiotics for Lyme, and she's 90% better, and her psychiatrist has taken her off her medicines. The interesting thing is, when she was first in, and I said to her parents, as I was talking, "What do you know about Lyme disease?" "They're from Connecticut, they're very well-educated." And they say, "We didn't know a thing about Lyme disease." So I thought that was illustrative. So Lyme disease is called, is the great pretender. When I was in medical school, syphilis was the great pretender, because it can cause neurological problems, it can cause rheumatologic problems, it can cause cardiac problems, GI problems, respiratory problems. And the most important thing, hearing the health department and the testing, which I don't think is very satisfactory, Lyme is a clinical diagnosis, that patient is in front of you, and you look at the pattern of their symptoms, you look at the chronology of what they've gone through, and if it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, swims like a duck, it's Lyme disease. And, you know. So a negative elizer, the Department of Health officials mentioned, the screening test does not rule out Lyme disease. I have patients that come in with months, years of symptoms, two or three negative Lyme tests, their pattern looks like Lyme, they've been to very, a good number of specialists, very good specialists, had CAT scans, MRIs, et cetera. I make the presumptive diagnosis of Lyme disease, treat them, and the proof in the pudding is they come back after the first visit, and they're 50, 60% better. And a lot of times, they'll sit in your office and just cry because of what they've gone through, so I think it's really important for the panel to know that. Each patient, I treat each patient as a case history of one. I know there, you know, we learned in medical school, double-blinded, random-control studies to find about treatments, but really, when that person's in front of you, it's, it's a case of one. And I've always learned about, from a mentor of Lyme, the statement that absence of proof is not proof of absence, and we're constantly looking to find the positive test. In fact, I see a lot of times, people go to a physician with an EM rash, and they say, "Well, you know what, we'll just test you and see if it's positive." No, they have an EM rash, they have Lyme, you have to treat them. The elizer test is only 49% sensitive. So, that's like flipping a coin. And then what happens is, when you send off an elizer, and you should get a Western Blot, that's called a two-tier system. But some labs, when you send off the Lyme elizer and it's negative, they won't even do a Western Blot. But even the two-tier system is not very accurate. We're seeing an increase in...
Do you have a testing system that you feel is more accurate?
Well, I use other companies, like I use a company in California, Agenix, which, you know, I find is a little more accurate. I think what happens is, some of the commercial labs, they do 1,000 tests, and they do 10 tick-borne disease testing, so they're not very focused on it. Where you go to someone who does a tick-borne lab, they focus on the accuracy of their tests.
And is Agenix accepted by Wadsworth, or not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, no, they are, they are covered, except for a couple of tests that they don't, okay, but most of them, they are.
Okay.
But one of the things that Wadsworth does is, I, as a New York physician, I'll go to a conference, and I'll see all these tests, I'll come back to New York, and it won't, I won't be allowed to do it. So for instance, bartonella is becoming a big co-infection. There's a lab called Galaxy Labs, that is a very good lab, we're not allowed to use those, that lab. There is a lab in Connecticut called Milford Molecular Diagnostics that does a DNA sequencing, very sophisticated testing for Miyamoto's disease, we're not allowed to use it in New York, so I think that's a really important thing that we have to correct. In terms of attachment of ticks and tick trans- very sophisticated testing for Miyamoto's disease. We're not allowed to use it in New York. So I think that's a really important thing that we have to correct. In terms of attachment of ticks and tick transmission, I have seen tick transmission in six hours, 12 hours. The literature has cases that are transmitted in six hours. So I think going for 24 to 36 hours can be very misleading to physicians. Oh, yours was only on 18 hours. That's it. Now, there are also guidelines, the old guidelines are, if you have a suspicious tick bite, take doxycycline, two caps. The ILAD's guidelines is, if you have a tick bite that's suspicious for Lyme disease, three weeks of doxycycline. I think the two capsules is erroneous method. So again, they did say this in the panel, it's important to know...
Two capsules would be two days?
Two capsules, one time.
How many milligrams in a capsule?
100 milligrams. So it's really important to know that the, that it's important to detect and treat Lyme disease, because the earlier you treat it, the best results you get. If you have someone who comes in a year of having symptoms, they're going to have a projected treatment cost. And Lyme disease, when it is there, can meld into symptoms of fibromyalgia, symptoms of chronic fatigue, and symptoms of chronic infection, and even autoimmune disease. So it's a really devastating disease. With respect to research, we need to do research on other modes of vector transmission, like how many pathogens are in mosquitoes, because they're also a blood-borne, and also sexual transmission, because it has been shown to be in semen and vaginal fluid. So with treatment, my main tenets are clinically, you treat Lyme clinically, you use the test to support your diagnosis. And I do patient-centered care. In other words, what I've learned is, you could see it in the clinic for 10 years and never have seen it in the book. You could study the book for 10 years and never see it in your office. So it's really important to have that person in front of you, that you take their full history, the chronologically, their symptoms, who they've been to, what they're going through, and then do testing, and also treat when necessary. I wanted to discuss another case, because Babesia was mentioned. I find Babesia is also becoming a big problem. And I do smears on Babesia, or I do PCR, I do antibodies, and they're negative. I had a woman who was 42 years old, and one of the things you can get with Babesia is chest pain, and shortness of breath, and chills. And went to the emergency room three times, and three times was sent to the cardiologist, had three cardiology workups. I saw her, she had patterns which I thought were consistent with Babesia. I did the test, but I started treating her. She saw a physician infectious disease, who called me and said, "She can't possibly have Babesia. She's psychosomatic." The woman, after treatment for Babesia, has been well, and I see her every year, and she's doing fine. So now, and the third case I'd like to tell the panel is my daughter, who was, nine years ago, went to camp, came back without an EM rash, without a tick bite, developed a headache. We started treating her, doxycycline, she didn't respond, rocefen IV. Then she developed autoimmune problems, which were treated with IV gamma globulin. And then I met with the neuro-ophthalmologist, the pediatric neuro, and her test had come back by the time she was in the hospital. She was hospitalized for three weeks, lost part of her vision and movement of her eye. Her test came back positive for Ehrlichia, but negative for Lyme. But when I sat down with the infectious disease, they said, "This implies Lyme disease. The symptoms are definitely Lyme." And she took 10 weeks of IV antibiotics and was better. But what happens is, when patients get into that, often the insurance company says, "Four weeks of antibiotics, no more," and they are left in a lurch. They don't know what to do, and you don't know how many times that happens.
Hopefully, it's not a patient.
Nope. Okay, so I'm open for any questions, if we have time.
How do you, what are the tests for Babesia and Ehrlichia that are different than the test for Lyme?
Well, Babesia is a parasite, and so you can do antibody testing, which shows the history. You can do a PCR, and you can do what's known as a Babesia fish, which is a test that I often find very good to use, which Igenics does. And then you can also do a Babesia smear. I find a Babesia smear is a way that, in the past, we diagnosed malaria, and so we also do the same for Babesia. But I often find the yield comes back negative a lot of times when the clinical picture is Babesia.
You mentioned the last case about your daughter, Ehrlichia. She was tested negative for Lyme, but how did you, what test did you do to discover what was wrong with her?
Well, I did a panel with...
The same thing?
What?
The same, the same thing, looking for the antibodies?
Yeah, yeah.
And are the panels and the standard practice wide enough, or are they too limited?
Well, a lot of times, initially, primary care physicians will just do an antibody test. So they'll do an ELISA test, and if it's negative, they'll stop there. I see a lot of physicians that don't do co-infection testing. So my initial panel, I will test someone for the antibodies, depending on the case, the PCR, because the PCR is the first thing that's positive, because the antibodies may not be positive for four to eight weeks, but the PCR could be positive after two weeks. So it depends on the case, and it depends on the timing when you do that.
I know I have a question, too. It seems that there's a lack of uniform diagnostic tools that are available, or maybe that are shared. So how can the state help to resolve some of the issues that we're seeing, because there aren't uniform guidelines? What do you suggest that we do?
Yeah, I think, you know, educating physicians on the co-infections on Lyme would help. And also, I feel that New York State physicians are so hampered by not being able to use certain tests, when they're available, and 49 tests. So I understand where they want to check the efficacy of a test, but, I mean, I don't know whether 49 states will have a test that's not going to be good in New York State. So I think that's a problem.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. And Senator Heming has a question as well.
Thank you for your report. It was very good. So the co-infection testing, how do we get that out to physicians? Goes along with Senator Serino's question. How do we let them know that, look, you should go beyond that first test, you should do the co-infection testing?
Well, I think, I think you have to start with educating the physician on the whole concepts of Lyme and co-infection. If you just put out, "Do this, do this," it probably won't work. They have to have an understanding when they're talking to the patient. Like, what I do in my history is, is on every patient, I have pattern recognition on my history. So if I see patterns that go for Lyme, or I see patterns that go for Babesia, then I'll do the test to confirm it. The lab tests, to me, are supportive. Lyme is a clinical, Lyme and tick-borne disease is a clinical diagnosis, the lab supports it.
And I feel like I hear from my constituents over and over again, and I think the constituents impacted with Lyme and tick-borne diseases, they do do a lot of their own research and education, and they do push for this co-infection testing, and they do push to utilize other labs. But the stumbling block seems to be, well, getting past, finding a doctor who will do those things, and then finding insurance companies who will pay, if they can't pay themselves, finding insurance companies who will cover. But I feel like I tried to ask the Department of Health about the testing, and do we have the best testing and the most accurate testing available here in New York State? And I felt like the answer was yes. But now, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I kind of feel like I'm hearing that may not be the case.
No, I don't think it is.
So how do we, how do we get to the bottom of that? How do we...
Well, like I said, I think you have to have some standardized education for physicians to let them know what would confirm a diagnosis, and what tests would confirm a diagnosis. And so they would have a template for how to proceed, because every Lyme patient is different, and if you try and make a cookbook, you're going to be thwarted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Dr. Buck. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
No, but you've left us with an absolute interesting statement of, "Each patient's history is a case history of one." That's very stark.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to hear from our patient panel. We have...
Have a seat. You can start, you can follow up.
We actually have three, I think all three are going to come up. We have Jill Hourback, Martin Wilson, and Audrey Mitchell. Are they here?
Audrey Mitchell is going to do it by Skype.
Oh, Audrey's on video, that's right. Okay. And Mark, is Martin here?
A clip. Excuse me, a video clip. Audrey Mitchell is the young lady who testified at Senator D. Francisco's press conference. Yes. So...
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. With plaque. So if, we'll kind of limit you to, we've talked to all of you, each of you before, we talked to Ms. Wilson before. We have other patients that felt this was too much to come here, but we appreciate your being here, because this is very important. It gives rise to the fact that this is not just something about statistics, or testing, or whatever, but real people with real pain and real search for cure. So appreciate all of that. But that being said, you probably know far more about this whole condition than any of us up here. So I'm going to say, perhaps, maybe if you keep your comments to eight minutes, and then we'll have some questions, I'm sure.
I was told 10, and I timed it.
10, okay.
I think you'll find it informative.
You must be a lawyer negotiating already.
I'm sure you'll find this very informative.
I know that, that's why. So thank you, Ted.
Thank you, sir.
Start off with the ladies first, Jill, and then you want to finish up with your comment on something.
I just wanted to say, what we have now, basically, are tests for the antigen. That's the body's response to the bacteria. Not everybody has a good antibody response to the pathogen, which is the antigen. What we really need are good antigen tests, and there's some underdevelopment that are very exciting. So let's hold our horses here, and just hope that within the next year, we'll have some available. So my name is Jill Hourback, chair of the Hudson Valley...
The Lyme Disease Association, and many other organizations. I thank you, Senator Hanon, Senator Serino, and all you other senators. I'm honored to be asked to participate in this public hearing about what New York State should do about the scourge of Lyme and tick-borne disease, both as a patient and an activist. For 20 years, I taught others about the importance of tick population reduction to minimize tick illness transmitted to people, pets, and reservoir animals, which infect us and other animals and the ticks. Lyme remains undiagnosed in many due to the lack of a gold standard testing, causing long-term illness and even death. Too many remain ill, some totally disabled. For myself, I was undiagnosed for a decade. I had been to physicians, but they just tapped me on the shoulder, implying it was all in my head. One even said, "Oh, well, you're a woman. When you're sick, who needs to be treated as if you're a hypochondriac?" So I just stopped going to the doctors. I finally had to leave my job as an IBM Systems programmer. Almost a year later, when my life seemed as if it were over, a friend who had Lyme disease diagnosed me and sent me to a physician who was well-versed in its symptoms. Finally, correctly diagnosed, I thought, "Two aspirins, and I'll be better in the morning." In total disbelief, I found out otherwise, and was treated for almost a year. Following that, I was able to return to my profession, a productive member of society again. However, I have never returned to the person that I was previously. I have relapses for which oral antibiotics seem to get me back on my feet. And I thank God for the compassionate physicians who stood by the Hippocratic oath to do no harm by not deserting us in spite of a threat to their medical licenses. As horrid as my physical symptoms were, the cognitive were devastating, such as not knowing whether to put a stamp on the right or the left side of an envelope, not being able to find words or remember. I felt as if I were standing outside of my body, looking in, wondering, "How could this all be going on?" From head to toe, a horrid, paralyzing headache extending to my neck and shoulders, a twitch in my right eye, vision so blurry that I couldn't even read the large signs at the ends of the row of the supermarket, ringing in my ears which has never resolved, stiff vocal cords making speaking difficult, an irregular heartbeat, Lyme carditis, a tremor in my hand, wandering pains in my joints and muscles, shooting pains that would come and go, and burning spots on my skin, and there was nothing there, electric light tingling in various parts of my body. All of these, along with crushing fatigue, were which I could not sleep. Was I imagining it? Was it possible? My entire family was affected. Our son, a high school senior, was horrified. It impacted his college education. It almost broke up my marriage. Our finances were affected and more. When I told my husband I was scared because I couldn't think and remember, he would tell me, "If I just knock it off, I'd be all right." I'd cry, he'd get angry, I'd run out of the house, speeding away in the car, trying to run away to someplace that was safe. I felt so alone. Maybe I should just kill myself. It is called Lyme rage, and I consider myself one of the lucky ones. Some people are stuck in that hell because they're denied treatment by insurance companies and for other obvious reasons. I also contracted Babesiasis, 104, 105 fevers, and luckily survived. At the time, Babesia was not considered an Lamm pathogen, so no one knew what I had. Together in Dutchess County with Dr. Horowitz, Dr. Osfeld, myself, and some others, we proved otherwise, and the ticks from Dutchess County tested positive. This oh-so-clever Lyme bacteria intrigued me. I dove into study. The ticks became my enemy. Children were no longer safe even playing outdoors, rolling down a grassy hill, jumping in the leaves. Actually, no one's safe, as ticks do not discriminate. In the year 2000, previous Assemblyman Joel Miller arranged a meeting with New York State Commissioner of Health, and this is the book I put together. One of the topics I edited was about Babesiasis. I asked Dr. Brian Fallon, current director of Columbia Lyme Disease Research, Tick-Borne Disease Research Center, and Dr. Kenneth Leidner, inventor, author, and published physician, with a few of their patients to participate. New York State investigated, and within about two years, a notice by the New York State Department of Health was sent to all New York State physicians about Babesia's presence in non-coastal areas of the state. In the USA, in 2015, the estimated treatment cost of just Lyme disease alone was $1.3 billion. While far exceeding that was the estimated total cost burden to society, which was well over $3 billion, and that's one year. While in New York State, in 2013, it was $476,300,000. You want to get some research money? Treat Lyme disease, get rid of the ticks. Those estimates do not include all the other tick-borne diseases, at least one of which, Babesia has affected our blood supply, sickened and killed some transfusion recipients and others. However, governmental agencies only spend a pittance on research. When a three-year-old has 32 nymphal ticks removed from her body after visiting a local park, and a 17-year-old teen, Joseph Alone, die from undiagnosed, untreated Lyme disease after less than a month of illness, you know it's way past time to do something. The one thing everybody agrees upon is early diagnosis and treatment is critical for the best outcome. Even the CDC says in endemic area like New York, given suspicion of early Lyme, a physician should treat without serology. Yet so many physicians do not without the serology or the infrequent bull's-eye rash. It's estimated to be about 10%. A one-fits-all cookbook approach doesn't work for every patient. Yet physicians turn patients away after two to four weeks of treatment. Co-infections aren't always considered. Most physicians follow the IDSA guidelines as if it were a Bible. They're concerned about the insurance companies and their own group policies about treatment, and you can't blame them. New York State physicians are in dire need of tick-borne disease education that is much broader than just the IDSA guidelines and includes the ILAD's guidelines. The insurance companies must stop dictating treatment, and as a matter of fact, they save money in the long run, in my opinion. Had that been the case, for 17-year-old Joseph, we'd be alive today. Most physicians follow the IDSA guidelines as if it were a Bible. They're concerned about the insurance companies and their own group policies about treatment, and you can't blame them. New York State physicians are in dire need of tick-borne disease education that is much broader than just the IDSA guidelines and includes the ILAD's guidelines. The insurance companies must stop dictating treatment, and as a matter of fact, they save money in the long run, in my opinion. Had that been the case, for 17-year-old Joseph, we'd be alive today, and many like myself would not have become incapacitated for Lyme disease or almost died for other tick-borne diseases. Exemplifying the issue with the CDC is the treatment of a tick bite with one double dose of Doxy that we were talking about earlier, which is really based on faulty research. Determination of the illness was the development of the classic bull's-eye, which only about 10% exhibit. Patients were only followed for six weeks. Who knows whether they stayed well after that? There are other documented reasons as well. Even the CDC could not validate this in three of their own research projects. The worst about this practice is that the antibiotic can block the body from building an antibody response, which is what our testing test's for. Therefore, a patient who is not cured, has Lyme disease, is sero-negative, and left in purgatory, untreatable. I strongly suggest New York State Department of Health advise against this window treatment by physicians. There are expectations that the federal bipartisan law on tick-borne disease will bring the brightest and the best on all sides together in a work group to look at all the sciences to address real answers under the Secretary of Health and Human Services, Dr. Price. What an opportune time for New York State to act on this issue at the same time. The answers that are needed: one, an accurate test for active disease, that means an antigen test for the pathogens, not an antibody test. Cures to suffering, two. Three, tick research for drastic reduction of the tick population and to block tickability to transmit disease pathogens. Four, increased funding commensurate with impact of the disease on society. For 43 years, ticks and their pathogens have been allowed to spread unabated like wildfire. What was once a Connecticut problem is a problem across the USA. Tick research holds a most promise to bring about fruitful solutions to stop ticks and stop disease, yet this field of study has been ignored and receives only a pittance of funding. Therefore, I organize a coalition of prestigious scientists. Tick research to eliminate disease, TRED, to support this dire need. I included the announcement and the scientific membership list in your folder. Please take a look at it, it's very impressive. They all agree that we have to deal with the ticks, and they're on both sides of this issue. Until then, the scourge of tick-borne disease will continue to increase and march across New York State, the USA, and the world. A Lyme vaccine would merely be a patch on a gigantic environmental problem. It is not a solution. The ticks and their many pathogens would continue to increase and spread, infecting us with serious and fatal diseases. Currently, prevention measures are all we have to try to protect ourselves against the bite of the sepsulism infection, the almost invisible, minuscule ticks. By the way, in the package I gave you, there's also a tick removal kit, so you can compare them, and I have all, Senator Hannan, I have all the information about the costs of Lyme disease, so you want to get some money. You weren't here, $476,330,000 in just 2013 was the overall cost for Lyme disease in New York State. There's where your money can come from. Again, our deepest gratitude to all of you for taking action to stop tick-borne disease suffering in New York State.
Jill, I want to say thank you very much. You know, she's been instrumental in helping me with our task force, and I, my heart goes out to you with everything that you've gone through, and you've covered a lot of what you've experienced, you know, the financial, the family consequences of Lyme disease. It's just heartbreaking. Good, thank you. Does anybody else have a question for Jill? Senator Amador?
Thank you, Jill, for testimony and getting through what you've been through. During your discovery and time of going through the diagnosis, different types of medications and things, were you ever given any type of narcotics, opiates, or anything?
No, I was not.
Okay. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Senator Little?
Yes, thank you very much for your testimony and for the whole panel, for all that we've heard so far. I guess the annoying question that comes back to me, and I think this, you know, if someone is bitten by a tick, what is the harm in taking doxycycline for three weeks?
Okay, so, this is my opinion. Doctors give people doxycycline for zits. Lyme disease, like syphilis, is a really serious, can be a really serious neurological as well as physical problem. I think it's faulty in areas where Lyme and tick-borne disease is endemic or epidemic, not to treat. Not to treat on a tick bite, two doses, double dose of doxycycline, you know what? I think the bacteria just kind of laughs at it. And who knows if it didn't lower the bacterial load and then it built up later? They never bother calling any of those patients after six weeks. The CDC, three research projects couldn't support, couldn't validate those studies. And yet, that's recommended and used all over the places, and I think it can be, as I pointed out, really dangerous to somebody who does have Lyme disease, that are assumed not to have it because they were given that treatment, and they may now test negative. My opinion, after being through what I was through, three weeks of doxycycline on a tick bite, you know, it just, it's, you're asking the wrong person.
So you need to actually be, have the results of a test and be positive that you have Lyme disease before they treat?
The problem is the tests are not accurate enough yet.
Well, that's what I hear.
We need what I was talking about, and I think Holly Hearn, Professor Hearn, will be touching on the testing. But there's some very interesting things in the pipeline, and we in New York State should jump on that. We also need, listen, guys, this scourge of disease is never going to end until the tick population is dealt with. There are researchers, if you look at TRED, there are brilliant, brilliant researchers. They don't have the funding to bring about their solutions to fruition because they don't have any funding. And when they retire, there are none of these brilliant young scientists coming in to replace them because there's no funding there. All that wealth of information is being lost. We in New York State need to work across, I mean, we've got Cornell, we've got Stony Brook, we've got Binghamton, we've got, and we've got, I'm trying to think of Smith College.
Paul Smith's in my district.
Paul Smith College. We have so many of them. They could work with these researchers. I can, you know, you want to go offline? I can tell you all about the stuff. It's very exciting. They've got, and the CDC, there's something called Nucatone, which is a totally negligible, it's food-grade to humans, it kills ticks, it kills mosquitoes, and if we just had something simple like a wash, which the CDC was talking about doing, then people could go in, wash themselves in the evening. Parents wouldn't have to be doing tick checks, which are pretty invasive on children when you're checking their genital areas, and it should not be. If we can wash our children at night, take a shower.
Jill, what's Nutone or Nucatone?
Nucatone is, it is a byproduct, an oil of yellow Alaskan cedar or an oil of grapefruit. I'll be glad to provide you with all the information.
Is it so commercially?
There is some commercial use of it, but it is not approved yet for tick reduction and such. You have to go through the EPA, which is a very costly project, and the company that has the, has been, the CDC has the patent on it. They licensed it to a company called Evola. And Evola is now working on a spray for Zika, not on the, not on ticks. And if you'll notice in my handout, although it didn't print very clearly, the CDC reported cases of tick-borne disease in the United States is 10 times as much that as mosquito-borne disease. Zika is really important. Lyme, ticks, and mosquitoes transmit horrid pathogens that cause death, but we, that ticks have been ignored in this country. Absolutely ignored.
All right, thank you. Thank you, very good, cutting-edge. Now, ask Mr. Wilson.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Martin Wilson. Doctors first suspected that I had Lyme in September of 2009. By that time, I had already been feeling poorly for several months. They ran a standard Western blot test, which came back negative, and they took me off the antibiotic that they had prescribed. I wasn't conclusively diagnosed with Lyme, diagnosed with Lyme until October 2015. That is eight years, over 25 doctors, including five neurologists, six internists, four infectious disease specialists, two rheumatologists, and two cardiologists. Long-term antibiotics, intravenous rocephrine, intravenous immunoglobulin protocols, and every day, every single movement is painful. Slightly more than half of the doctors that I saw concluded that I had Lyme. Most were unable to help. All of my organs are inflamed. My immune system and nervous systems are compromised. I'm in pain. All of this primarily because the Western blot test is approximately 44% reliable and doctors are uninformed. It is not my purpose to stand here and cry that I might have been diagnosed earlier, treated earlier, or perhaps enjoyed a better outcome. Unfortunately, this nightmare of misdiagnosis is all too prevalent, as you've heard. What about the child that gets bitten this week? Everyone here recognizes that early treatment results in better outcomes. Without easy access to adequate testing, many more will be doomed to my fate. I am fortunate to have good medical insurance. I have the flexibility in my work schedule and the financial resources to finally arrive at a definitive diagnosis. Most people don't enjoy these luxuries. The Western blot test is approximately 44% reliable. That's 56 missed cases out of a possible 100. That's a failing grade in anyone's class. Those are worse odds than flipping a coin for a diagnosis. This test was designed for statistical reporting to the CDC, not for diagnosis. The test measures a patient's antibody response to the disease. This essentially means it sees a shadow of the disease, not the disease itself. What happens when the test is given and it's high noon in the patient's body? It casts no shadow. The patient is misdiagnosed and doomed to suffer. It is noteworthy that three other states have enacted legislation requiring doctors to inform patients in writing that a negative Western blot does not rule out a diagnosis of Lyme infection. The test is that bad, yet doctors rely on it. Every single test in the USA is based upon one copy of one Lyme organism, so its usefulness in identifying any other strain of Lyme is limited. It is widely recognized that certain vital components of the test are not included, namely OSPA, OSPB, and OSPD, among others. In 1994, Dr. Patricia Coyle of Stony Brook co-authored a paper entitled "Early and Specific Antibody Response to OSPA in Lyme Disease." The conclusion reads, "A specific antibody response to OSPA occurs early in Lyme disease. This is likely to have diagnostic implications." Doctors Coyle and Schutzer developed a diagnostic test based on OSP back then. Currently, George Mason University has developed a urine test using nano-trap technology, but still based upon this most prevalent indicator of Lyme infection, OSPA. Dr. Benjamin Luft of Stony Brook has developed a much broader assay based upon the most common proteins present in all strains of Lyme, including OSPA, OSPB, OSPD. This has been known for 25 years, and we are still awaiting satisfactory testing. Polymerus chain testing, polymerus chain reaction testing, PCR, is essentially a DNA test, and it is on the cusp of being widely available and affordable. The Oxford NanoPort system promises to enable PCR-based testing from a desktop computer in your doctor's office. It is currently being tested around the globe as well as aboard the International Space Station. There are numerous laboratories across the country that are permitted to furnish tests in 49 states, but not here. Why not New York? Or better yet, we have Stony Brook, Cornell, Binghamton, Columbia, and many more. We are New York, the epicenter of the financial world. We're also the epicenter of Lyme disease. We should take, we should, why should the leading research be done at John Hopkins or Tulane or George Mason? This is our fight. We should have the funding here at our disposal to utilize it in our own state to provide testing that meets our criteria and standards, not the CDC standards. All of these technologies can and should be embraced to assist better and earlier diagnosis. At this time, no single test is foolproof, but used in conjunction, all of these tests can certainly improve upon the current 50% failure rate. The citizens of New York deserve better. The CDC Western blot measures 10 bands. Interestingly, Stony Brook Lyme Disease Laboratory tests for 27 bands, but they only report the bands if the doctor requests that additional information. I was told that only approximately 30% of doctors request that additional information. That means 70% of those people tested by that lab receive less information than is readily available. The patient is paying for the test. Aren't we entitled to our money's worth? It's like bringing your car for inspection and being allowed to drive away with no brakes. This information is critical, crucial for an early diagnosis. Stony Brook has these records going back many years. It is of vital interest to make this data public. We could then get a true picture of the extent of this epidemic. I am sure that MS, ALS, Alzheimer's, and autoimmune researchers would be interested to know how many of their subjects have had exposure to Lyme. Anecdotally, there are many connections, but without hard data, such connections are meaningless. How many people have Lyme? We don't know. How many people die of heart disease or brain disease as a long-term result of Lyme? We don't know. In the information age, this is totally unacceptable. It is obvious that New York must act independently, at least at first, to clearly identify the nature and extent of this issue. The only way to exemplify our need for federal funds is through hard data, the collection of which is one of the mandates of the 2014 report of this task force. And I read the report, and Senator Hannan, and the rest of you members, I'd like to thank you for enacting legislation that protects physicians and therefore patients, because it is truly an arduous process to try and get treatment in this state. In conclusion, I would request, implore, demand, and humbly beg that this task force and the legislative body it represents bring all of their resources to bear to implement the following: to promote the use of Stony Brook Lyme Lab for Western blot tests rather than private commercial labs. I myself have seen a huge disparity in the results from tests done back-to-back on me. To educate and instruct physicians to avail themselves of all the information that's available from this test, because if you get a test that's CDC-negative, but in the margin you see it has OSPA and OSPB and OSPD, you got Lyme. And everyone, this is no secret, everyone knows this, every researcher knows this. It's Lyme 101, it's basic. This information needs to be passed on to doctors who can then make a judgment call, yeah, I'm going to give you 28 days of doxycycline prophylactically. Okay? They could also probably instantly approve on the Western blot test by expanding on it with Dr. Luft's assay that he developed about seven or eight years ago, which is much broader and identifies things other than Borrelia burgdorfi. There was a study done on seagulls. They're rife with Borrelia gurini. Nobody knows what we have at this point. Number two, to immediately collect and make public all data from Stony Brook. I believe the private sector can then use this data to solicit federal funds for research and development, better tests, and better treatment protocols. Lastly, to retrain physicians on the latest developments, testing and treatment protocols for Lyme, through routine continuing education requirements. They have to do it anyway, let's heighten their awareness. And promote early prophylactic treatment for Lyme where cases are suspected or probable. Nobody ever died from doxycycline, and with what I'm experiencing today, you want to talk about financial costs? I used to make over- to make over $500,000 a year, I used to pay over $100,000 in taxes. I now make less than $100,000 a year and pay less than $30,000 a year in taxes. So right there, bullet point, dollar for dollar, you're losing. You're invested with me because you just lost a bucket load of money for over the last 10 years. Financially, my insurance company, I wouldn't want to be them. They just signed on to continue my IVIG for another year, $10,000 a week. That's a half a million bucks. And most people that are suffering like me don't have access to that kind of treatment, so they suffer. Right now, my hands are burning, my feet are burning, my legs are going numb. My tongue, I get inappropriate sensations and tastes. Every joint in my body, every muscle in my body hurts all day. That's Lyme disease. And I'll probably die in 15 years from heart-related, my aorta is enlarged, I have three nerve bundle blocks to my heart. My cardiologist doesn't know about Lyme disease, but he's telling me what it's doing to my heart. I have lesions on my brain, it's on the MRI. It's suggested that that's actually nematodes infected with Lyme that are eating my brain. It's a scary, scary, scary thing. Had I been treated early, perhaps. As you, perhaps, our life would be a lot different today. And the cost, just in dollars and cents, the cost is extraordinary. One last thing, I'm not insensitive to Zika virus. 215 cases in this country this year, 1.8 billion earmarked for research, $20 million nationwide for Lyme in the federal budget. It's a disgrace. The CDC says 300,000 new cases every year? That's epidemic. We need more than 20 million. 20 million is paltry. And if we have to do it here in New York, we can do it here in New York. We can lead. We can show the federal government, the CDC, whomever, what's going on and what we need. We have the data. Ask Stony Brook, they have the data. And I'm sorry for ranting.
Do not apologize.
I appreciate your attention and patience.
Thank you very much for your passionate testimony. It's so appreciated. And you know what? We are all here today because of you, Jill, and every other patient and people that haven't been diagnosed with Lyme disease that probably have it. So it's because of you and your testimonies, and I'm so sorry for what you're going through, but I thank you from the bottom of my heart for being here today and participating.
God bless you all for your, all your good work and your best efforts. I thank you.
Does anyone on the panel have a question for Martin? Thank you. And now we're going to go on to our...
I just wanted to add one thing. What makes me really feel like crying is when patients call up and they have no resources and they can't get any help. It's just devastating.
Yeah, we're going to go to the, what? There's a video that we're going to watch now, too, so.
Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, it's Audrey Mitchell's.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, this is a constituent of Senator D. Francisco.
My name is Audrey Mitchell. I am 19 years old, and I have chronic Lyme disease as well as seven infections that come along with it. Standing here before you today, I probably don't look sick, but even as I'm standing here speaking to you, I have a horrible headache, a fever, intense joint and muscle pain, total body fatigue, dizziness, and my skin is so painful that my clothes physically hurt my body. Lyme has messed up my brain quite a bit, and my memory and reading skills have greatly diminished, so please bear with me as I have to read this speech word for word off my paper. Since being sick, I have become an incredible actor, able to smile and socialize even though I'm in so much pain that I feel like I should be in the emergency room. It can be extremely frustrating having an illness that is invisible to most people. I'm dying inside, but you would never know it. Being in this much pain and feeling this awful is my new normal. And even though I feel like my body could give out at any time, I have found the strength to get out of bed, get dressed, put on a smile, and be here today. My everyday life requires a strength that I never knew I could possibly have inside me. Chronically ill people are some of the strongest people you will ever meet. In the fall of my senior year of high school, I was a straight A student. I played soccer and volleyball. I was president of my class. I went to all the social events and I was thriving. And then I began to feel sick. I felt like I had the flu every day. By the end of my senior year, I had dropped out of some of my classes, quit my job as president, and was only able to go to school for a few hours a week. I went from acing AP English to barely being able to read a page out of a book. I barely graduated. When I went to see my doctor, she couldn't figure out what was wrong with me. There's such a lack of awareness for Lyme disease that she didn't even consider it as a possible diagnosis. So she told me that all my pain and illness was simply due to stress. It's the most horrible feeling in the world to have a doctor tell you that all your pain is in your head, to have a medical professional look at you and tell you that your pain and illness is not real and is not valid. But I know my body, and I know that this much pain cannot be due to stress. Thankfully, I have the most amazing parents in the world. They believed me when I told them I was in pain, even though my illness is invisible to most people. They helped me fight for my health. We began to see specialists after specialists getting test after test, constantly getting blood drawn and getting scans done. I felt like a science experiment. Countless doctors, and no one even suggested the possibility of Lyme disease, again, due to such a lack of awareness. Finally, we were able to connect with a Lyme literate doctor in Albany. In the spring of my senior year, I was diagnosed with Lyme disease and seven infections. I've been doing treatment for a year now. Every day, I wake up in intense pain and go to sleep in intense pain. There's never a break and never a day off. It seems that I have a new symptom every day. My body is a prison that holds me captive in pain and illness every day.
That was a young lady who testified for a press conference that our colleague, Senator John D. Francisco, had. We had wanted her to come here personally, but she was physically unable. So, and that's a kind of story that many people told us. And in fact, in terms of, one of the ironies, one gentleman told, head of my staff, Kristen Sinclair, that he had been diagnosed for Lyme for a number of years and didn't have any success in getting cured. And then it turned out that they tested him for thyroid, and it turned out he had a thyroid problem, and he never had had Lyme. So just the reverse can happen as to what we think and what goes on, but it goes to your point about the need for testing and diagnosis.
Absolutely.
Well, I had already been through so many different batteries of testing.
We thank you very much. We have, continue on our quest.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time and also our condolences, too.
Thank you.
All of our really knowledgeable Lyme physicians check out all these other reasons before they treat us for Lyme disease.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jill and Ira. Thank you. And now we have Dr. Sunil Sud. And I hope I pronounced your name correctly. And Dr. Sud is the chairman of Pediatrics Southside Hospital Infectious Diseases, attending Cohen Children's Medical Center, professor of Pediatrics and Family Medicine, Hofstra Northwell School of Medicine, Infectious Disease Society of America. Thank you very much for being here today.
Good morning. I guess afternoon.
Time goes quickly.
My name is Sunil Sud, and I am here today representing the Infectious Disease Society of America, IDSA. I would like to begin by thanking Senator Hannan, Senator Serino, and the rest of the Senate Task Force on Lyme and Tick-Borne Diseases and the Senate Health Committee for extending the invitation to speak as part of the hearing today. IDSA is the largest infectious disease medical society in the United States, representing more than 11,000 physicians and scientists. The society's members focus on the epidemiology, diagnosis, investigation, prevention, and treatment of infectious diseases in the U.S. and abroad. Our members care for patients of all ages with serious infections, including tick-borne infections such as Lyme disease. IDSA is committed to ensuring that patients receive the highest quality care for infectious diseases, including Lyme disease. We have great sympathy for patients who are suffering from persisting symptoms after treatment for Lyme disease or other conditions, and want all of these patients to achieve the best possible outcomes. I myself am a practicing infectious disease physician on Long Island, and I developed a research interest on tick-borne diseases when I moved to Long Island in 1990 from Tulane University, where we did not see ticks at all. I have published several papers in peer-reviewed journals, edited a book on Lyme disease, and actively teach at the Hofstra Northwell Medical School. I currently serve on the Joint IDSA American College of Rheumatology, American Academy of Neurology panel that is revising our guideline for diagnosis and treatment of Lyme disease. Lyme disease is caused by the bacterium Borrelia burgdorferi. There is little doubt that the number of cases of Lyme disease is increasing because of a geographic expansion of the deer tick, which is moving west and south from its customary mid-Atlantic and New England locations. In the majority of patients, Lyme disease causes a skin rash called erythema migrans, often accompanied by muscle and joint pains. Infection can then spread to the joints, the heart, and the nervous system. Lyme disease is diagnosed on the basis of combination of factors, usually these three factors: potential exposure in an area where there are deer ticks, what I call the opportunity for exposure, the medical history as well as physical exam for characteristic signs of the infection, and a confirmatory blood test, although for patients who are newly infected with the rash, diagnosis is made on clinical grounds, on the basis of what the rash looks like, with no need to obtain blood testing. Lyme disease has well-characterized clinical presentations. However, there is a public perception that Lyme disease can routinely present in a myriad of ways. That is incorrect and may lead to over-testing and over-diagnosis for symptoms such as fatigue or pain, which are due to other conditions. This practice can lead to individuals who do not have Lyme disease receiving dangerous treatments, including long-term antibiotic therapy, as well as a delay in reaching an accurate diagnosis. For patients with persisting symptoms beyond initial treatment for confirmed Lyme disease, additional antibiotics have not proven helpful compared to a placebo in five randomized controlled clinical trials. In fact, the CDC released a report describing five patients who had been put on long-term antibiotics that caused serious and in some cases life-threatening infections, but were found not to have Lyme disease. The reference, which is from MMWR Weekly Report, is in my printed testimony. Clinically validated, FDA-approved tests are the best currently available tests for diagnosis of Lyme disease. While in early Lyme disease the test may be negative because antibodies have not yet been produced by the body, this does not mean that these tests are bad, but is an inherent limitation of all antibody test, testing of infections of all kinds. In fact, for patients with symptoms for more than two to three weeks, serology tests are positive in 70 to 100% of patients and are highly specific, more than 95% accurate. Important progress has been made to facilitate the development of even better diagnostic methods. The NIH and CDC initiated a serum reference repository in 2008. In 2011, this repository became available using well-characterized Lyme disease serum samples available to the scientific and manufacturing communities for the testing and comparison of new and current diagnostic tests. CDC is also developing next-generation diagnostic tests, for example biomarkers, to improve upon current serologic tests. However, the development, validation, and commercial distribution of new tests can take many years and millions of dollars. IDSA is advocating for greater federal support to advance research and development of such new diagnostics. IDSA has done much work to educate policymakers, healthcare providers, and the public about Lyme disease in an attempt to advance prevention strategies, improve testing and diagnosis, prevent unnecessary and potentially harmful antibiotic use, and ensure all patients receive the best care based on available evidence. IDSA strongly supports increasing funding for the National Institutes of Health for Lyme disease-related research, and for the CDC to improve surveillance in epidemiology of Lyme and other tick-borne diseases. The best strategy, however, to prevent tick-borne illnesses is personal protection with the use of approved insect repellents. There is considerable lack of awareness and practice of this strategy. More public service advertisements on how to reduce tick bites would go a long way in reducing these illnesses, as you heard Commissioner Zucker emphasize earlier this morning. I would like to thank you all again for the opportunity to discuss this important issue with the task force and Health Committee, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Sud.
Couple of things. How, you're focused right on things that I'm interested in, so thank you. The biomarker is that CDC is developing. You talk about the need for more money to support it, but are they close on doing that? Will they be, obviously, it would only be done if it's more accurate than the current tests?
Correct.
Is it something in the horizon, or are we just hoping?
I think for now, it's under development. I don't see anything on the horizon. The field of biomarkers for early diagnosis of infections spans from the neonates premie babies I see in the NICU to all the way to things like, you know, persistent infections and other infections which may be hard to differentiate. For example, biomarkers are used, are being proposed to distinguish between viral and bacterial diseases. So these are, I think, in general, concepts in development not yet or in the near foreseeable future and going to be of practical use.
Okay, so it's still beyond the horizon.
I think still in the future, right.
Second, you do, you jump to something that occurred to me, and you're talking about not just money for the CDC, but money in NIH, which would hopefully go to root causes and try to see what is here in the diseases we've talked about this morning, or the other related ones that people will allude to that are autoimmune. It seems to me, but I would be curious of asking this question as to which part of the NIH, because there's obviously different institutes within the institute. And are you aware of where we should be directing your interest?
So the institute I'm most familiar with is the NIAID, which is National Institute of Infectious and Autoimmune Diseases. And I do think that a lot of persons who have chronic symptoms have immune-mediated diseases, which happen to follow not just Lyme disease, but many other infections I treat. People get better from the infection, we're done with the course of treating, the bug is gone from the body, but the body continues to react in what we call an immune-mediated reaction, which causes chronic symptoms in some people. I think that there is a lot of room for increased funding for immune mechanisms of disease. So I don't know whether that's the right institute to get the money for it, but I know that it's one of the institutes. There's also other, like the National Institute, I believe, of mental health and of child diseases, where there are, again, in infectious diseases, we see related problems with, problems that have been blamed on one infection or the other, which is hard to prove. For example, things you may have heard of, something called PANDAS, which has been blamed on strep, which is common infection in children, which leads to behavioral developmental problems. But the connection is still tenacious, and I think we need a lot more research. Again, this may be an immune-mediated, self-perpetuating reaction to an infection that came and went. So I think a lot of research needs to be done into autoimmune diseases.
It certainly points us to something, and if anything, given all the other problems we have with Washington, support for the NIH is fairly constant, so that would be useful.
I think.
The last thing, I just want, you talked about earlier, the antibodies not showing up until two or three weeks, then the blood tests are positive, 70 to 100% of the patients, highly specific, then leaving the range 70 to 100%, which is huge. But ought there at least not to be protocols developed for physicians that say, look, just because you get initial tests that are negative or inconclusive, you ought to be following up with these. Do those protocols exist?
Yes, actually, I was fortunate enough to serve on the 1993, it was Association of State and Territorial Lab Epidemiologists and co-sponsored by the CDC. We met to standardize what at that time was early phases of Western Blot testing for Lyme disease. And by consensus, we came up with these Western Blot criteria that you've heard a lot about. And it's gratifying to note that 24, 25 years later, we actually, they hold up quite well, and, but it has to be matched up with the patient's symptoms. So we did in that recommend that acute and convalescent testing, infectious disease doctors recommend that. Infectious disease doctors recommend that all the time. If acute serum is negative, you still have a high suspicion. You can go ahead and start treatment, then repeat the serum test in two to four weeks. And at that point, you haven't lost that opportunity to treat. No harm, I agree with, you know, as many of the people said today, no harm in giving an early empiric course of antibiotics while waiting for confirmation of the diagnosis. So, I think most physicians do understand the concept of repeating what we call the convalescent sample. Sometimes I need a little reminding from infectious disease specialists such as me. And that's in the -- it's called the Dearborn, CDC Dearborn Guidelines. That's where we met, in Dearborn, Michigan. So, that's published, and that's not explicitly mentioned in the lab report, although I think some labs do have a footnote saying, early on, for example, Lyme disease can be sero-negative in a repeat specimen. I think it actually, it is in the language, but it's sometimes in the fine print at the bottom. So, that's already protocol.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Senator Hanen covered a lot of what I was curious about, too. And as you said, that 70 to 100 percent, that's a huge
Sorry.
No, that's a huge margin, because we hear so often from people that are not diagnosed go on to be even sicker for longer periods of time. So, what do we do? There seems to be no real uniform protocol, because I have people that come to me all the time, that have gone to the doctor, not diagnosed. And sometimes they have a rash, sometimes they don't, and they're not given the antibiotic. So, it's very frustrating.
So, I think that 70 to 100 percent, the way we wrote it, is misleading. It's because this would be amalgamation of western blood in early, for example, two to three weeks. I've even seen nervous system involvement, where the first western blood, even though the patient has characteristic symptoms, and we are hospitalizing and treating, that may be the 70 percent range. But when you get to the late stage, which is arthritis, it's in the joints, it's 100 percent. So, I think it's kind of spans the early -- that western blood range spans the early and the late stages of Lyme disease.
Does anyone else have -- Senator Little?
Yes, thank you very much for all your testimony. One of the things you mentioned is the best strategy is personal protection with the use of insect repellent, which is something, you know, that I've read about as well. But do you recommend a certain type of insect repellent that would be helpful? And the second thing would be, how do we get this into public service announcements so that people can find out ways to help prevent them from being infected?
So, the answer, the first part, yes, I have two words that I tell everybody I meet, whether patient or not, and it's DEET and permethrin. DEET is the most effective, really, insect repellent that can be applied to skin, and it's actually safe down to a month of age. And the other is, if you really are living in an area such as eastern Long Island or the Hudson River Valley, where you think on a daily basis you're exposed to ticks, and by the way, these are equally effective against mosquitoes and mosquito-borne illnesses, then it really pays to impregnate your clothes. Actually, you can treat your clothes with permethrin, and it stays in the fabric for up to six weeks. You can treat a set of clothes and use them through the summer. I tell this to people traveling abroad all the time to avoid mosquito bites when they go abroad. And permethrin is used -- it's not EPA-registered to use on skin, although it may be safe. But DEET for the skin, permethrin for the clothes.
I apologize for my lack of medical knowledge. Did you say that second one?
Permethrin, so P-E-R-M-E-T-H-R-I-N. It's actually, interestingly, it's an analog derivative of a chrysanthemum flower natural chemical.
We had someone in our office, matter of fact, this morning, talking about treating your clothes.
That's right.
And I couldn't remember what it was called.
So, that's well-established. It's used actually by some of the people who you heard from today, who are actually in the field dragging ticks for their tick service. They actually use permethrin. And in the Army, they use permethrin in their clothes and gear. You could put on your backpack, your sneakers, everywhere. It's available like at the Home Depot, Lowe's, or something, or Amazon. So, it's not, you know, hard to obtain. So, I tell people that all year long, that is, you know. And the second thing is, I -- I'll come back to what Commissioner Zucker was saying earlier this morning. We don't -- I would like to see just a lot more awareness of insect repellent. I don't think people even living in endemic areas know really that much about repelling insects and ticks.
Well, that was an incident with the children's camps, when they were told not to use it, and we got that straightened out.
Yeah, so there's, again, there's misconceptions about DEET being, you know, toxic, but it's not. It's actually safe. Nobody's dousing themselves with this chemical. You're just applying the right amount.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Sid.
Thank you very much.
And I can tell you, Jill and I, right first, told me about the permethrin, and I use it when I go out in my garden, and it works.
That's right.
So, thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have a question? Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to hear from Dr. Craig Hirsch.
Could you -- I'm not the physician, but would you identify the person you're coming to?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was going to say, I'm Craig Hirsch. I'm the chief clinical officer from Empire Blue Cross Blue Shield.
And Dr. Hirsch invited me to accompany him. I am Sean Doolin, outside counsel to Empire.
All right. Well, I know Ms. Doolin, but I think for the record, we're all in webcast, so that's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm here today representing Empire Blue Cross Blue Shield, and to talk a little bit about coverage policy for the treatment of Lyme disease. By background, I'm a family physician. I grew up on Long Island. I attended SUNY Upstate Medical School. And, you know, I'm familiar with Lyme disease as a treating physician, as well as seeing friends and family who, you know, have been infected and affected by Lyme disease. When I look at Empire's policies on the coverage of Lyme disease, it looks not to differ from what I can determine from other major insurers, and it really focuses primarily on the coverage of intravenous antibiotics. You know, we provide benefits and make coverage determinations for the treatment of Lyme disease. Our coverage policy is arrived at through a very thoughtful process. We have a medical policy and technology committee. It's made up of outside physicians, as well as internal physicians. It reviews all the medical literature. The policies are reviewed, in this case annually, most recently is February. And most of the determinations are based off of evidence-based guidelines. And the evidence-based guidelines that apply specifically to Lyme invariably look at recommendations from the Infectious Disease Society of America, as well as the CDC. Our policies in regard to the IV antibiotics are reasonably straightforward. They essentially cover up to four weeks of intravenous antibiotics for one of essentially three conditions. And these are, I think, where the Infectious Disease Society of America recommendations are. One is if you have significant heart block, you know, the rhythm of your heart gets disturbed as a result of Lyme disease. The second is recurrent joint swelling, persistent or recurrent joint swelling. And the other is significant neurologic disease. And significant neurologic disease are things like meningitis or encephalopathy, encephalomyelitis, things that are quite significant and can be confirmed through laboratory testing. Spinal tap, essentially, that can show antibodies or bacteria in the cerebral spinal fluid. So, it's pretty straightforward. The early Lyme disease, which is subject to treatment with oral antibiotics, there really isn't anything in the way of restrictions on that. There's no preauthorization requirement. Physicians, it's in my experience, that physicians are quick to order medications like doxycycline. You may have heard, you know, sometimes there's delays in diagnosis for reasons of education. But certainly, the guidelines don't stand in the way of any of that early treatment of Lyme disease. As far as condition of chronic Lyme disease or post-Lyme disease syndrome, as you heard, there's always some controversy about whether symptoms are attributable to Lyme disease that has been treated, or it could be a result of some other process, like immune-mediated disease or other disease that hasn't been recognized. Certainly, cases that can't be fully attributed to Lyme disease. Maybe it can't be ruled in, but it can also be ruled out. In those circumstances, we do not provide coverage for ongoing treatment of Lyme disease. Sort of a -- there is a 28-day limit, or 30-day limit, essentially, on the treatment of Lyme disease for those conditions that I said, mentioned previously. The last thing I would say is, insurance companies, certainly our insurance company, you know, we provide the opportunity for appeal of any adverse determination. You know, we encourage people to take that up, and their doctors to take that up, and make a cogent case for why they should be covered. And even beyond the walls of Empire Blue Cross, there's the opportunity for an external review and outside organizations to make determinations about the coverage. So, that's essentially what I wanted to say today. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present at the committee.
Your experience as a payment for people who have problems, so it goes well beyond Lyme disease, because you spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in operations and other serious injuries. But I would presume, and I used to believe that your, through the parent company, which is now Anthem, was -- had its own studies, its own journal, et cetera, to try to look at different ailments, to try to look at different treatment modalities, see what worked. And has this risen to that stage where you're putting your collective wisdom together and comparing notes? Because I would have to think that people who are ill, ultimately, you pay for, one way or another. And so, trying to, as we do with any number of different conditions and diseases, try to get this treated as quickly as possible, again, is something we'd want to do with Lyme disease.
Right. I'm not aware of this collective body that's looking at our data and trying to make different kinds of determinations.
Well, really, your own body. At one point, I had seen the National Blue Cross Association doing a publication. I just presumed that now it's owned by Anthem and owned you, that they would still be doing that.
So, Sean may want to elaborate on this, but Anthem is only 14 of the Blue Cross plans throughout the country.
And how many covered lives?
Many covered lives, yeah. Three, 3.5 in New York, 3.5 million in New York.
35 million total.
35 million in total. The policy that's created is a national coverage policy. So, this is being formulated not just in the state of New York, but elsewhere. But again, it is based off sort of evidence-based guidelines, and not any internal data or internal analysis of our specific data.
But what happens with someone who's still -- and I've heard people complaining they have lupus, or they've had chronic fatigue syndrome, and this has lasted for years. So, they have, they're continually going to physicians, they're continuing going to the emergency rooms, they're continuing getting new prescriptions for different drugs, all of which leads down to, if they're continued to be covered by Empire, getting charges to you and to your bottom line, which means to me that trying to probe what's going on, and I'm not saying that there's an answer, but at least the attempt to come up with an answer.
Yeah, that's an interesting approach. I'll take it back. Obviously, we provide the ongoing services for all the supportive care that patients need associated with their illnesses. Just when it comes to Lyme disease, we are following the evidence-based guidelines. You know, it's the best we got. And, you know, we try to make determinations that are fair and reasonable, but we'll certainly cover the ongoing needs, whether they're medical, psychological, psychiatric, rehabilitative, or other medications that might be appropriate for the treatment of their conditions.
Just to clarify, the
Speaking to the mic.
The panel that sets Empire's policy is actually an Anthem panel of experts, physicians, both affiliated with the company and unaffiliated with the company, that is reviewing it across the entire nation, and soliciting input from, you know, physicians locally, as well as nationally, as well as, you know, research data, clinical trial data, in order to formulate the position. So, that is, I think, the answer to your question, Senator, is that is ongoing, you know, at the national level.
It's what I'm trying to do, is push so that you will become part of the solution, not just, and if you have 35 million covered lives, that's a heck of a lot of things to do day to day. And I don't argue, and that needs to be done well. But it just, we had done a report three, four years ago, coming back to look at it in preparation for this hearing. I don't find that much of an advance, not that much of an advance, as to where we are in the state of the art for the treatment process. So, trying to get you guys to do that. The other thing that hits me, as you said 28 days, how much of an absolute is that? I mean, if the doctor says, "Wait a minute, I really have a suspicion," because we don't know when the tick bit. To me, we suspect it, but, you know, it's the same judgment as to the length of a condition. It's the same judgment we have when we're trying to say, "How many weeks has a woman been pregnant?" We don't know when the pregnancy date.
Right. So, we don't put restriction on the guidelines. If anything, we're more liberal. So, for instance, with the oral antibiotics after initial exposure to Lyme disease, maybe you get the rash, or you have a positive serology. The guidelines speak to 10 to 21 days of oral doxycycline. When it comes to intravenous antibiotics, some of the conditions are, speak to, up to 21 days, some speak up to 28 days. Just as a blanket, we say we will cover up to one month of coverage, 28 days. If someone wants to do less than that, that's up to the physician and the patient.
Or more.
Or more.
Yeah, they would come in and then
I would imagine you're also being liberal on it, because what we deal with, or I deal with, is complaints. And of all things, I thought there'd be more complaints about the insurance companies in this hearing than we've had, which are really minimal. And in fact, Martin, who just testified, talked about his company continuing to cover him at a very high cost. So, there has been some behavior change, but I'm trying to get you then to go the next step. How do we cure this? How do we get you part of a movement? How do we get NIH to pay enough attention to immunology?
Yeah, I think that's a great position, and I'll certainly take that back.
And to your point, and Dr. Hirsch touched on this earlier, the external review law, we actually looked back at the data for claims submitted and external appeals from Empire denials. And in 2015, there were a total of 50 cases, only 50 claims, that went to external review, 45 of which, the company's position was upheld.
Since we've gone through the legislative battles on that and enacting that, actually, the external appeal turned out not to be utilized as much once the companies started doing
Adapting their policy. That's right.
For the first appeal and the second appeal internal.
That's right.
But I -- life is never complete, and we always have problems, so we'll see if that goes, if that continues. Senators?
Does anybody else have a question? I think it all goes back to the testing, you know, because we've heard so much from everyone today that we just need to do more and all be on the same page, so that people are treated. For Lyme disease, they're actually diagnosed. You know, you've heard my story, if you were here at the beginning. My son wasn't diagnosed, still has the symptoms. My brother was not diagnosed for almost 10 years. And I can't even imagine, like with Martin, with the cost if he had been diagnosed right from the beginning. So, it's a whole gamut, and I really appreciate that you're here today, because that's a huge factor in Lyme disease, is the insurance coverage. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hirsch. Thank you very much, Mr. Doolin.
Okay, now, we're going to hear from Matt Frye. Oh, he's great with this. You'll love his charts.
Oh, he's great with this. You'll love his charts and diagrams. They're fun. Hello, Matt.
Hello. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Matt Frye, and I am an entomologist with the New York State IPM Program at Cornell University. I am grateful for the opportunity to be here today, and would specifically like to thank Senator Serino and Senator Hannon, who just stepped out, for the invitation to participate. I'd like to start by painting a picture of the not-so-distant past. As recently as 20 years ago, in many parts of New York State, children could spend spring through fall, playing outdoors, running through fields of tall grass, and walking through wooded forests. Lyme disease was something that everyone heard about, but few enough people had it that it seemed quite rare. Well, times have changed, and now in packed rooms at evening forums, every hand is raised when asked, have you had Lyme disease or know someone that does? In the past several decades, Lyme and other tick-borne diseases have become epidemic in New York State and much of the Northeast. Ticks are being found in new places and in greater numbers than reported at any time in the past, and people are getting sick. We need solutions, and we need them now. This may sound like a discouraging state of affairs, but there is hope. In the room today are subject experts that have dedicated their careers to studying ticks and tick-borne disease. At the other end of the room are policymakers and officials who have demonstrated a commitment to addressing this problem head-on. And so today, as we formulate solutions for a rapidly expanding problem, I would like to make the case that research, education, and collaboration are essential to reducing the incidence of tick-borne disease for residents of New York. The organization that I represent is the New York State IPM Program, and we are a unit in the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences at Cornell University. The mission of our program is to help people manage pests in ways that minimize environmental, health, and economic risks, which we achieve through education and research. Our staff represents a diverse knowledge base with experts in integrated management of pests of agriculture that damage fruits, vegetables, ornamental crops, livestock, and field crops. The community IPM program that I work with addresses pests in non-agricultural settings, such as bedbugs, rodents, geese, cockroaches, and of course, ticks. I'd like to take a moment to identify the problem with ticks from the perspective of New York's Land Grant University, which serves the people of New York State, and to identify opportunities to reduce the impact of ticks on New Yorkers. Please keep in mind that as an expert in pest management, my comments are focused on addressing ticks. So as we see it, there are two main problems. First, the incidence of tick-borne disease continues to increase, with new pathogens emerging as threats to the health of New Yorkers. Some statistics that were not presented today, Lyme disease is the most commonly reported vector-borne disease in the United States. But 95% of all Lyme disease cases are reported from only 14 states, which includes New York. Several counties in New York contribute to this high incidence of Lyme disease. And have a figure here that demonstrates which of the counties are most impacted. Those with a darker color have a higher incidence of Lyme disease. This figure is also in your packet. Among those most affected by Lyme disease are children, especially boys aged five to nine years old, which is represented in the second figure, also in your packet. As you can see, young children in this bracket are most significantly affected by Lyme disease, with a later peak in 45 to 50 years old.
I'm old enough to avoid that.
The second problem is that misinformation about ticks and tick-borne disease is abundant and dangerous for New Yorkers. Not all ticks are the same. Tick species differ in the pathogens they carry, the hosts they feed on, and the environments in which they are found. Lyme disease is not the only risk. Ticks can carry other pathogens that are transmitted faster and result in different symptoms. Some tick removal techniques, including burning, suffocating, as we heard earlier, squeezing, and others, may increase the risk of acquiring a tick-borne pathogen. Ticks can be active any day of the year when temperatures are above freezing, not just in the fall and spring, when most information is released about ticks. And finally, some essential oil-based pesticides are exempt from registration by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and therefore manufacturers are not required to provide data on their efficacy at killing ticks. Use of these products and some untested repellents can give a false sense of protection, leading to increased risk of exposure. Now, there are opportunities to address these issues with ticks. First, basic and applied research on tick ecology, biology, and management are necessary to provide solutions to reduce tick populations. Numerous tools and techniques are available for tick management that directly target ticks, their hosts, or their habitat. However, a review of the scientific literature provides no definitive method to reduce both the risk of encountering ticks and the incidence of tick-borne disease for New Yorkers. Research that identifies practical methods to address tick populations where people live, work, learn, and play is still needed. And we're fortunate to hear later from Dr. Rick Osfeld, who will talk about some of those techniques. Ticks affect more than humans. Our companion animals and livestock are also affected by ticks and tick-borne disease. In New York State, the Animal Health Diagnostic Center at Cornell University provides tick testing for individuals and organizations, and conducts research related to tick-borne disease. Protecting animals from ticks requires unique approaches and represents an additional need. A second opportunity is collaboration among researchers, health workers, and educators across New York State and the Northeast. Ticks are a problem for most of the Northeast, and experts across the region have worked somewhat independently for decades, often competing with each other for funding. In 2016, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention funded a Northeast Regional Center for Excellence in Vector-Borne Disease, which is housed at Cornell University. The center promotes collaboration among experts to address three main goals, which we heard earlier. First, to train a group of public health entomologists with knowledge and skills required to rapidly detect, prevent, and respond to vector-borne disease threats in the United States. Second is to build effective communities of practice with collaborations between academic communities and public health organizations at federal, state, and local levels for vector-borne disease surveillance and prevention. And third, to conduct applied research to develop and validate effective vector-borne disease prevention and control tools and methods necessary to anticipate and respond to disease outbreaks. Through its collaborations, the center has already identified a number of priority projects that will address management of ticks with new integrative control strategies. Unfortunately, as we've heard, none of the projects are funded at the level needed to make the rapid progress that is necessary, because large grants are not often awarded to basic research questions. The third opportunity relates most to my work at the New York State IPM Program. Targeted effective messages that focus on changing behaviors, specifically the adoption of personal protective measures, can reduce the risk of encountering ticks and acquiring a tick-borne pathogen. To date, most efforts to educate the public about ticks and the risk of tick-borne disease have been passive. Brochures, websites, booths at community health fairs, and even presentations, all require an investment and interest to find and acquire that information. To get information to broader audiences, outreach efforts must identify and target specific audiences or groups, those most at risk, offer simple but meaningful messages, and aim to change behaviors for improved health and safety in New York. This year, the New York State IPM Program is grateful for funding that was offered by the Senate Task Force on Lyme and Tick-Borne Disease, and has been grateful for the opportunity to participate in public forums throughout the state. These have been hosted by members of the task force and have received tremendous public interest and media attention that highlight the tick problem and create local awareness. The program that the funding from the task force will create is a campaign that will utilize social marketing techniques to target at-risk individuals. Considering that children, especially boys aged five to nine years, have the greatest incidence of Lyme disease, we plan to develop information for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts that will apply in general to elementary-age students. Our campaign will utilize visual and hands-on materials that are engaging and help children to recognize ticks and learn how to conduct a tick check. Students will bring this information and awareness home, teaching the rest of the family about tick prevention. And this is the second group of images that I have for you today. For example, tick tattoos, pictured here, will give children, given to children, will hopefully provide an opportunity for parents to find life-size ticks in areas where they typically attach on their children. Behind the knees, in their armpits, behind their ears, the nape of the neck, et cetera. Poppy seed bagels, impregnated with nymphal ticks, train children to recognize small life stages that are common in the spring. As was discussed earlier, this, in entomological terms, gives students a gestant. They get used to seeing it, and they're aware of what that tick looks like. These and other items, such as the tick vials, which Senator Serino has brought around to the students, give children an opportunity to understand what ticks look like and be better aware of them in their environment. In addition to an emphasis on children, our educational campaign will include wallet-sized tick identification cards and image-based tax, task sheets with steps for individuals to follow that will reduce their exposure to ticks. Task sheets will be created for interest groups such as hikers, anglers, hunters, landscapers, and gardeners who are exposed to ticks in their daily lives. Image-based information communicates to a broader audience, including low literacy and non-English speakers. And messages will be disseminated on our social media outlets. Importantly, funds from the Senate Task Force can be used to print materials and make them freely available to wider audiences. As an educator representing Cornell University, it is my job to provide accurate evidence-based facts to inform the public about tick risks and prevention techniques. This important work that strives to protect the health of New Yorkers is dependent on rigorous scientific inquiry and research, which of course relies on funding. As we move forward in addressing this expanding problem, it is critical that funds are available for basic and applied research, as well as ongoing educational campaigns that raise awareness and result in behavior change for New Yorkers. I'm grateful for the opportunity to share these thoughts with you today, and for the ongoing support of the Senate Task Force on Lyme and Tick-Borne Disease. I'm hopeful that science and policy will continue to work together to protect the health of New York residents and set an example for the rest of the Northeast. Thank you.
Okay, Matt. Did you have any questions?
A couple of questions. Where is this Center of Excellence going to be? Because I see you're from Geneva, but Cornell's at the other end of the Finger Lakes.
Correct.
And there's also a Cornell in New York City, so...
The center is actually housed in Ithaca, in the Department of Entomology. And it's collaborating with researchers from the Connecticut Agriculture Experiment Station, with Columbia University, and with the New York State Department of Health. But the hub is actually in Cornell University in Ithaca.
Well, that's important. The Connecticut one group is the one that has the best document going for A to Z for the environment, and it's still represent, still on the CDC website.
Correct.
Unfortunately, it's over 10 years old.
Right. So, they are, there are plans to update that document as part of this program and to make individual pieces of that more accessible to the public.
And you note that the projects are underfunded. What are the types of projects you have that are there? Can you separate them out in terms of broad categories?
Sure. Well, I am not the lead researcher on that project. That's Dr. Laura Harrington from the Entomology Department at Cornell University. But some of the things that they are looking at are a better understanding of climate and how that affects tick populations. There's been a lot of work done by Dr. Rick Osfeld in the Hudson Valley, but they're looking at the state in its entirety to understand how climate affects not only tick populations, but actually the transmission of tick-borne disease. Assessing vector competence of local tick populations, so how are, efficient are the different tick populations at transmitting disease? And also chemical control programs. So, there's a lot of companies for hire that will do tick treatments, but it's not known if the products they're using are effective at controlling ticks. So, a lot of that basic research to understand how these chemicals impact tick populations, both in the laboratory and in the field, this, that's some of the work that will be done by the center.
So, you're mainly, it's mainly the field type of work that you're doing, as opposed to laboratory, as opposed to the medical?
Correct. They, the goal is to have the information be as accessible as possible. So what on the ground can be done to start addressing the tick problem? And as I mentioned before, Dr. Osfeld will speak about a project, hopefully, that he is working on currently that is addressing this at a community level. Because the research that has been done to date by the CDC has demonstrated that individual applications to lawns can reduce the number of ticks, but may not reduce the incidence of disease. So, Dr. Osfeld...
You mean, we just chase the ticks to some other lawn?
It's that people are picking up ticks in places other than their lawn. Perhaps in the playground, at school, in the rough areas, when they go to collect a ball, when they're hiking, when they're gardening, doing landscape work. So, ticks are not only in people's yards, and if you're only treating your yard, you're not really protected against ticks in the Hudson Valley.
Thanks.
And Senator Helming has a question?
Hi, Matt.
Hi.
Hi. I think, as you know, I represent a largely rural area. I'm also the chair of the Rural Resources Commission. So I have an interest in, do our farmers and our farm families face significantly more challenges because of their type of work and because they're out in the fields? Is that being studied or looked at?
That's a great question, and I think it comes back to the surveillance being done at the state level to, to document whether or not tick populations are the same in these rural areas. Certainly, I think the educational outreach to those areas is often limited, because maybe it's not as accessible via social media. Maybe the outreach campaigns are not as effective, because farmers aren't going to come necessarily to an evening forum. So there, there are things that maybe can be done in more traditional outreach of visits to farms as part of livestock and field crop education. The animal diagnostic lab is looking at the impact of ticks on livestock health, so there is some work being done there as well. But I'm not sure about the inherent risk to rural areas versus more urban areas.
Is there, does Cornell have a partnership with our local, well, actually, I know they do, with our farm bureaus? That may be a way to get the message out, get the information out.
There's certainly that. And also, if we're targeting information for children, we have, through Cornell University, the Forage Program, which deals specifically with children, and also cooperative extension offices in every county are a great way to start to disseminate some of the information. And I think a lot of rural communities rely more heavily on cooperative extension than in some of the more urban areas.
And then my other thought was, and this may be like getting too far out there, but when we, we look at our communities, one of the counties that I represent, Ontario County, is one of the fastest-growing communities in New York State. And there's a lot of activity over development, planning communities, planning parks, et cetera. Is there any information that gets out to, or for instance, our planning and zoning boards, our development offices, to try and instruct them and educate them on like, the best management practices when you're working with developers on design, or is there anything? I think I saw on a poster at Cornell last week, something that showed the best design for preventing ticks.
Correct. And that is from the Tick Management Handbook, that Senator Hannon mentioned. I don't think that that audience is being targeted, and so that's one that we should really focus on. As there's more urbanization and people are converting their backyards to places that their children are playing in, we need to instruct them on how best to design their yard to reduce the encounters with ticks. So...
And our parks and recreation departments, and everyone else.
So, there's a lot of different agencies that we can partner with to get that information in their hands.
Matt's done, oh, sorry, Matt's done quite a few forums with us. And it was one of the forums that when Matt talked about removing your clothes and putting them in the dryer, that I started doing and finding the ticks, because we were bringing the ticks in the house. And that was just from doing simple gardening outside. So, you know, it's those little things that do a lot to help us. So, thank you very much, Matt. Thank you for your testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're going to hear from the panel from Stony Brook on Long Island.
No, there's no collaboration. Well, I can't.
Do you want that?
No.
I know.
I know, Dr. Marcos. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And you're going to have to be kind of self-sorting here, because you've grown. And I was in partuning a person who represents you governmentally to, you know, Stony Brook's very important, you have to be represented. And it went from Dr. Marcos to now Dr. Benary, Dr. Danillan. So you're going to have to tell me, you'll figure out who goes first, and tell us a little bit about what you want to talk about upfront. I don't know if you have, oh, you do have some printed material.
Yeah, we have a testimony.
So I'll let you, let you go, Dr. Marcos. And if you want to respond also along the way to all the comments and praise and whatever that you receive from other people testifying, that'd be fine, too.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Luis Marcos. I am the director of the Adult Lyme and Tick-Borne Disease Center at Stony Brook Medicine. I am joined by my colleagues, Dr. Kristi Benary to my left... I am joined by my colleagues, Dr. Kristi Beneri to my left, Assistant Professor of Pediatrics, Division of Pediatric Infectious Disease at Stony Brook Children's Hospital, and Dr. Susan Dolan to my right, Assistant Professor of Clinical Medicine, Division of Infectious Diseases at Stony Brook Medicine. I wish to thank Senator Serino and Senator Hanon and the committees for hosting this hearing to help develop policies that will enable New York State to educate its residents and protect them from the dangers of Lyme and other tick-borne diseases. Stony Brook University Hospital and Southampton Hospital are the only tertiary medical centers in Suffolk County. Southampton Hospital is now known as Stony Brook Southampton Hospital, which is in an area in the U.S. with an abundance of ticks. Review of our electronic medical records highlights the large number of cases of Lyme disease in our patient population. Specifically, 1,026 Lyme cases based on ICD codes were reported in our electronic medical records for the period between 2010 and 2016. In that time, a total of 284 patients required hospitalization. In Pediatrics, we see inpatient admissions for Lyme disease as well, including Lyme carditis and Lyme meningitis. Pediatric Infectious Diseases Division also sees up to 25 patients monthly for outpatient referrals for Lyme disease and other tick-borne infections during the height of the tick season. For other tick-borne diseases, we have admitted 15 and 11 cases of early chiosis and anaplasmosis, respectively, to our hospital between 2014 and 2016. In these cases, polymerase chain reaction testing, also called PCR, was used to detect the genetic material or the DNA of the bacteria in the bloodstream. These diseases can also be diagnosed by serology antibody testing. The limitations of the antibody-based test is that it requires, in most of the cases, a repeat blood test in three to four weeks to confirm the infection, and the test is less specific because of cross-reactivity, which can cause a falsely positive test result. In our experience, the PCR diagnostic test is not always order during the acute disease, which is the most helpful, and some patients do not come for follow-up testing because they may not have insurance or they feel better and prefer medical attention is needed. This explains why number of cases may be underreported. In Pediatrics, the convalescent titers were found to be very useful for diagnosis, given the higher compliance with medical care from this population. With regard to babesiosis, we recently published a series of 62 adult cases at our hospital from 2008 to 2016, one of the largest series of cases reported to date in the literature. Since then, we have, we have seen several cases of complicated babesiosis, including a case in a pregnant patient who presented with significant anemia and an elderly patient who presented with spontaneous spleen rupture, a rare but serious complication of the disease. In Pediatrics, we published a case of congenital babesiosis and have seen another congenital case since, in addition to a severe case in one of our cancer patients. Patients with babesiosis can present with non-specific symptoms, and they usually do not have to have a fever. The diagnosis is only made if clinicians consider the infection and request the appropriate test. According to the final report of the Suffolk County Tick and Vector-borne Disease Task Force in 2015, Suffolk County reported for the year 2014 the following: 231 cases of Lyme disease, 66 cases of early chiosis, 46 of anaplasmosis, and 197 of babesiosis. The trend on the number of cases in all these tick-borne diseases has increased from the year 2010 to 2014. We believe the true number of cases is higher than the official report. Given the number of tick-borne diseases we see at our facilities, the Division of Infectious Diseases has recently announced a tick-borne disease referat clinic in order to provide a much-needed service to the local medical community and residents of our county. Our pediatric infectious diseases colleagues also see tick-borne disease referrals, and they can call to a phone number, as is in the testimony. Now, I want to talk about the gaps on tick-borne diseases, specifically diagnosis and education. As a tertiary care center with expertise in tick-borne diseases, we receive many referrals and can be an important resource for local providers via education in prevention, diagnosis, and treatment about Lyme disease and other tick-borne diseases. Support, such as headlines and technologies to provide internet-based counsel support, are needed to develop a state-of-the-art educational center. A major challenge we encounter is the diagnosis of early Lyme disease by serological testing, since these tests can be negative in about 60% of early cases, and if triggered promptly, early conversion may be avoided. Thus, understanding the clinical signs and symptoms of Lyme disease is important for appropriate test ordering and treatment. In addition, understanding the epidemiology and ecology of ticks is important. Specific to Lyme disease, the time of tick attachment is a key component of risk of transmission and should guide early intervention. With regards to time-sensitive attachment and transmission of the older tick-borne diseases, less is understood, and thus remains an area ripe for further study and potential for intervention. Lyme disease in children has an excellent prognosis. The spectrum of disease in children, like adults, includes early localized and early disseminated disease as well as late disease. However, unlike adults, encephalopathy and polyneuropathy are uncommon in children. Understanding Lyme disease in different patient populations is also important. Another significant problem is the lack of understanding of testing methods across the spectrum of health care providers, specifically the rationale for two-tier testing, the existence of non-specific cross-reactive antibodies, and the fact that antibodies represent a humoral response, which may be safe positive for years and cannot necessarily be interpreted as untreated Borrelia organisms. Diagnosis does not follow CDC criteria, can confuse both the patient and the practitioner. In regards to treatment, Stony Brook Hospital follows mostly established guidelines published by the Infectious Diseases Society of America and the Committee of Infectious Diseases of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Prolonged use, as well as use of antibiotics when not indicated, is dangerous and potentially can cause harm. These practices can lead to adverse, potentially life-threatening complications, such as clostridium difficile colitis, as well as sepsis by an infected central venous line. Unfortunately, we have seen several cases at our hospital where patients have presented with these complications. Additionally, prolonged use of broad-spectrum antibiotics can promote colonization with resistant microflora in patients as well as in their family members. This is a tremendous concern as we have a national epidemic with emerging multidrug-resistant bacteria. To foster the practice of evidence-based medicine, the IDSA proposed case definitions for post-treatment Lyme disease syndrome, PTLDS. PTLDS, which describes a group of symptoms including chronic fatigue, unspecified generalized pain, and neurocognitive deficits, is reported in about 10% of patients who had Lyme disease. Overlap with other diseases can occur and underscores the need to systematically study outcomes of treatment in clinical trials. Research is needed to better understand potentially debilitating symptoms related to Lyme disease, which occur or persist after proper antibiotic therapy. Such symptoms may also occur in patients who did not meet diagnostic criteria for Lyme disease in the first place. Clinical research and especially standardized clinical trials are required to tackle these issues. Stony Brook Hospital could serve as an ideal center to lead such trials. Lastly, we also need to understand Lyme disease in the context of co-infections with other tick-borne pathogens, because patients with Lyme and babesiosis may have worsening symptoms that may last for several months. Babesiosis, which has a longer inclusion period than Lyme or other tick-borne diseases, may present later and could therefore not be diagnosed when the patient has acute Lyme disease. This is of particular importance as the antibiotics that treat Lyme disease and some other tick-borne diseases will not also treat babesiosis. Several distant tick species exist in our communities, and we work closely with the Suffolk County Department of Health to remain up-to-date on changing tick epidemiology and emerging infections. An example is the Lone Star tick, which has historically been prevalent in the southern states. This tick transmits early chiosis, which is now often diagnosed in our patients. Also, there is some clinical indication that patients bitten by this tick may develop IgE antibodies to alpha-gal, which results in an allergy to red meat. Collaboration and research in these areas is critical. Stony Brook University constitutes a premier research institution with NIH-funded investigators in Lyme disease diagnosis, investigators invested in clinical vaccine and diagnostic kit development, as well as board-certified infectious diseases physicians and primary care doctors, who provide excellent clinical care to a patient population at risk. We have a loyal patient population, and we are committed to continue to grow as a center for research excellence in Lyme disease and other tick-borne diseases. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to share this information. Dr. Beneri, Dr. Dolan, and I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Well, Dr. Beneri, from an academic standpoint, what would you say elaborate in terms of what Dr. Marcos has laid out as a path to look into? I don't know how to work those things either.
Well, thank you again for inviting us. Essentially, I think one of the key roles as a pediatrician, specifically infectious disease doctor, again, is education to our community pediatricians. Children come, go to the doctor often, and I think it's an opportunity for us to work with them and have them understand how Lyme disease presents, when to test, how to test, and how to treat. We can be a great source for them, and as well as, as you'd mentioned, for families, be it in school settings or in the libraries. But I think, you know, I'm a native Long Islander myself, and I think a big part of understanding Lyme disease and other tick-borne infections is really the education. And then being at Stony Brook is the opportunity to do researches in the area and work with the patients that we have that are at risk, and I think they would be, be a great opportunity for us to collaborate and be a center for them.
Well, at the risk of getting the wrath of pediatricians, and probably insurance companies, mad, should this be part of the Well Baby visits, which I think last, as I recall, it's been a long time, but up till about nine or 10?
I think it's, I mean, yes, pediatricians are overwhelmed with the number of checklists they have to go through for visits, but I think there's multiple times they go to the doctor, and there may be different times of opportunity to catch them. And some families, there's multiple children, so I think if you take the opportunities when you can, maybe not every visit, but incorporate at a certain time of a visit, be it at a year when they're starting to walk through those areas, or be it when they're teenagers and they can understand themselves. Working with some of the sports teams, too, might be another opportunity, or in the schools, as you'd mentioned, in the educational forum. So I think it's not just the pediatricians, but I think if we gave them an opportunity at certain visits to discuss this, that might be one opportunity.
And Dr. Denellen, you're attending, you're out there, your practice is where in Long Island?
Actually, I'm a full-time faculty at Stony Brook as well. I've been treating patients with tick-borne infections for more than 30 years, so I have a few patients under my belt. One of the things that I've had the opportunity over those 30 years is to understand some transition of the epidemiology of the ticks and the diseases that I was seeing. I saw my first patients with early chiosis in the early 1990s, and, and have seen a steady drumbeat of patients since then. Those patients, and the babesiosis patients particularly, are some of the sickest I've ever seen, intensive care unit patients on pressors, et cetera. And I think, and I'm always impressed by the opportunities to make people sick. And so, like my colleagues, I spend a lot of time trying to educate patients to do the thing, like come in after you finish your, your work outside, rather than sit on the back deck and have a iced tea or a beer. Go in, take off your clothes, throw them in the dryer for 10 minutes, take a shower, and then come out and go and relax. Prevention is key. I think, though, that there are opportunities to further describe and discover the epidemiology of other tick-borne infections that are currently on or underappreciated on Long Island. The Lone Star tick, which is called Ambulium americanum, also carries a rickettsia that is distinct from the one that causes Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever, but on commercial testing is indistinguishable. And I have appreciated over the last five years, for example, that I'm being referred from outside physicians, patients that have a low positive Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever titer, but have never had a clinical illness consistent with this infection, which, having treated patients with this before, I have been humbled by the degree of illness. And I'm beginning to appreciate that the Lone Star tick is probably transmitting other rickettsia that we're just seeing on Long Island now, that may or may not contribute to that post-tick infection inflammatory syndrome. Same thing with Powassan virus. There are certainly organisms that we need to develop readily available testing for so that we can better understand the impact of these infections, as well as save patients from unnecessary antimicrobials when they are not indicated. And so I think that that's an area that's ripe for further research, and we certainly have a patient population which is not only amenable to participating in that, but can benefit themselves, as well as the other people, both on Long Island and the rest of New York State and the region.
It occurs to me that, given your institutional setting, and that given the huge population that you have coming through that are presenting with these symptoms, you have an ability to start letting us take a look at, but it would have to be done through a study, but more of a clinical, the cost of the treatment, the length of the treatment, the length of the illness before they saw you, the amount of testing you recommend, the cost of that testing, because I really don't know the cost, what it takes to have the initial testing, the second testing, the follow-up, and which if you're going to have, say, that when the disease is ripe, three or four weeks down the road, so that's a follow-up test. So all of those things are cost factors that I just don't know exist anyplace as we're, as we're trying to get medicine to address this. And so, to the extent we could encourage you and then also assist you, though, as Senator Serino said, we've had extraordinary cost constraints on what we could do for public health this year, this year's budget.
You know, one of the things that I'm always impressed on is how many patients come to us after being exhaustively tested and multiply treated by their outside physicians, only to come to us and have testing which is, and we endorse and we support our patients, we understand they feel poorly. But being able to discern what patients truly should benefit from additional antibiotics and which of those have their answers that lie elsewhere outside of the infectious diseases realm is such an important consideration, and, and we hope to be able to positively impact that.
All right. Well, this is certainly, the fact that you're testifying to this is, opens my eyes, you know, I am a Long Islander, though I'm much more towards the flatlands and the city.
Well, I grew up in Flatlands, so...
But I... But I didn't realize the amount of incidents you had, and this is a major thing, that you're, it's an opportunity, but your difficulty is you're in Stony Brook, which has 25 other major things going on at any given time, which can kind of get us, get our attention. And even going to your own hospital, when I go there, they've never talked about this, they've talked about all sorts of other innovative things that are happening, so this is a...
Well, Suffolk County has a population, last I checked, upwards of 1.5 million people, so those are people that are potentially at risk and which we hope to be able to positively impact their future, their future care.
Great. Well, thank you.
And thank you very much. And you know, when you think of the children with the childhood pediatrics, I think about the kids when I go to the schools and how they love to look at those vials, you know, they're curious. So maybe some more things, because they're very visual, and that's why we try to, you know, express to them, don't knock that little black dot off, you know, show it to a teacher or a nurse, and it is, sorry, all, it is all about education is the key to prevention. So thank you so much for all of your research and your good works, and 30 years is a lot. I'm sure you have a lot under your belt, so thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. I appreciate it.
But most importantly, thank you for your time, thank you for coming to Albany, that's really appreciated.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
And now we're going to hear from Holly Ahern. And Holly's the Associate Professor of Microbiology at SUNY Adirondack. Hello, Holly, how are you?
Good, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to speak. I'm here today because my beautiful, smart, and athletically talented daughter was once bitten by a tick. The tick was an adult-stage deer tick, it was attached to her for less than 12 hours. There was no typical bullseye rash or any type of rash or any other sign of illness at that time. According to the prevailing IDSA wisdom, since the tick wasn't a nymph tic and it wasn't attached for more than 36 hours, she was at low risk for disease, and so her tick bite went untreated. We now know that the tick infected her with two remarkably insidious bacteria named Borrelia and Bartonella, which stopped her body from mounting immune response and stealthily set up residents in other parts of her bodies, leading to an inflammatory syndrome. However, that took time, and over months, after several months, she came home from college one weekend because she had aches and pains, which escalated to searing headaches, heart arrhythmias, feeling like she had electricity running up and down her arms and legs, and that her muscles were on fire. She went to bed and didn't return to renew her life for almost a year. In between, we traveled a long road from doctor to doctor, trying to get an accurate diagnosis, find an effective treatment, all while fighting with our insurance companies to account for any part of it. It was a nightmare that no one should have to experience, and it's the path that led me here today. But every year, hundreds of thousands of people in the United States develop Lyme disease and experience the same nightmare. According to CDC statistics from 2015, there are nearly 400,000 new cases of Lyme disease in the United States every year. And just so you understand where those statistics come from, the CDC reports cases based on laboratory tests, and in 2013, they acknowledged that disease reporting is 10 times less than it should be. In other words, only one out of 10 cases is actually reported, and so whatever numbers you find publicly reported, multiply that by 10, a minimum of 10. And so in 2015, there were a little over 38,000 cases, times 10 is nearly 400,000 cases of Lyme disease in a year. So to put that in perspective, when you compare that to other infectious diseases that occur in the United States, Lyme disease is the second most common infectious disease in the U.S. Chlamydia is number one, which is sexually transmitted. Lyme disease is number two, and gonorrhea is number three, which is also sexually transmitted. These statistics alone should be enough to trigger a public health challenge to the outdated model of Lyme disease as being hard to catch. A significant proportion that, depending on the literature, you will see varies from 20% to 40%, but a significant proportion of those people with new infections of Lyme disease go on to suffer from debilitating arthritic, cardiac, or neurological symptoms that may last months to years and profoundly impair their quality of life. Eight years after her ordeal began, my daughter has regained much of what she's lost because I was able to put my knowledge and experience as a scientist to good use and be an advocate for her, but most people don't have microbiologist mothers to help them, and the medical community is still deeply conflicted over what to do about people like her, like Jill, like Audrey, like so many others who don't fit the model deemed appropriate for this disease. And as a microbiologist and her mom, I have to live with the knowledge that she may have recurring health challenges as a result of that tick bite for the rest of her life. In New York State, the official public health position on Lyme disease is that it is a high-incidence, low-impact disease. Calling this disease low impact is demeaning and marginalizing to the majority of Lyme disease patients who, like my daughter, have had their lives completely upended by this illness. The tactic of gaslighting Lyme disease patients to make them question their reality and doubt the existence of their crippling symptoms has been employed by the medical and public health community since the disease was first conceived in 1977. In my daughter's case, we were told by one medical provider that she was, after all, a girl, and that her symptoms came on because she couldn't handle the pressures of being at college. It didn't matter that she was a low-maintenance kid getting As in all her classes, had just achieved All-American in swimming, and was generally loving her college experience right up until that fateful day when she went to bed and couldn't get back up again. Many errors, excuse me, the prevailing medical view of Lyme disease flows from a relatively small number of clinical studies, which are notable because, number one, they share the same small group of authors, and number two, they share the same basic design flaws. Early studies were plagued by confirmation bias, which is the tendency to interpret new evidence as confirmation of one's existing beliefs or theories, and subsequent studies were marred by anchor bias, which is the process of relying too heavily on early studies that are often later proved to be flawed or incorrect. Many errors have been compounded because every research study that investigated the clinical course of Lyme disease in humans since the late 1970s used the appearance of a bullseye rash as the main criteria to either be included in the study as a subject or as the endpoint of the study. So why is this a problem? Because a single 1984 study, which was published in New York State, by the way, has anchored the belief that a bullseye rash occurs in 70 to 80% of Lyme disease cases. Yet there are dozens or more scientific, peer-reviewed studies which repeatedly and reproducibly show that the actual rate of the bullseye rash of Lyme disease is only 10 to a max of 40%. The best studies show 10% of cases of Lyme disease show a bullseye rash. In other words, the existing medical understanding of Lyme disease is based on clinical research studies that excludes 60 to 90% of people who actually have the disease. It's hard to imagine that it would be acceptable to exclude from research studies 60 to 90% of those who had HIV, who had diabetes, who had cancer, or who had any other illness other than Lyme. I think that it's safe to say that next to nothing is known about how to diagnose and appropriately treat people who, like my daughter, never got a rash and simply just got sick after being bitten by a tick. If her blood test for Lyme disease had not been barely positive, it was very likely that my daughter's health would have gotten considerably worse. As difficult as it was to effectively, to identify effective treatments, at least we knew our enemy: two tick-borne bacteria, named Borrelia and Bartonella, which are not like other bacteria and don't respond as expected to treatment, meaning they don't die when exposed to antibiotics. And I think that the one aspect of all of this that seems to be missing, we look at ticks, we look at the immunology, we tend to ignore the microbiology of this disease. These are remarkable bacteria that deserve in-depth study of their own because they are able to subvert the immune response and they are able to cause diseases that are not like other types of diseases, infectious diseases. The inaccurate, inaccuracy of existing diagnostic tests is a significant roadblock to treatment for many Lyme disease patients. A 30-year-old test called two-tier serology is considered the gold standard of diagnostic tests for Lyme disease, despite scientific evidence that repeatedly and reproducibly shows this test to have a rate of false negatives of greater than 50%. That is the ELISA test, the first of the two tiers. You have to pass the first tier before you get the second tier, and you've heard some people say today that that test has, is fairly sensitive and fairly accurate. Published studies, many published studies, show the accuracy rate of that test to be less than 50%. So therefore, using the gold standard diagnostic test, 50% of those who actually have Lyme disease are dismissed as not having Lyme disease. Those without a diagnosis go without treatment because without diagnosis, there is no ICD-10 code that shows that they have a disease, and insurance companies will therefore not reimburse for treatments associated with a disease that isn't there. Would a test with a 50% failure rate be tolerated for any other infectious disease such as HIV or hepatitis C? This lack of reliability has led a number of state legislators to pass laws which basically say that you are required, physicians are required to inform their patients that just because they have a negative lab test result does not mean that they don't have Lyme disease. I think that similar legislation should be considered in this state to protect New York residents from the consequences of falsely negative blood tests. While acknowledging that cases of Lyme disease are underreported, New York currently performs statewide Lyme disease surveillance by taking a 20% random sample of positive serological test reports from across the state. So this state is no longer counting cases directly, they are using a 20% random sample of positive serological tests. Therefore, surveillance data on Lyme disease, which is used to allocate public health resources in New York State, is based on the results of a diagnostic test that is wrong half the time. So that 8,000 number that you heard earlier about the number of cases of Lyme disease that are occurring in the state in a year, you could multiply that by two to account for the fact that the test is 50% wrong, and then you can multiply that by 10. So that puts the number of cases of Lyme disease in New York State over 100,000. That is a significant disease burden for the state. New York is home to arguably the best public health laboratory in the world, so why isn't Walsworth working to develop a better diagnostic test for Lyme disease as they have for other vector-borne diseases like West Nile virus, which is Mesquite-borne, or Zika virus, which we've talked about, or even Powassen virus? Those seem to be, if it's caused by a virus, it seems to be of public health interest. If it's caused by bacteria, it seems to be of less interest. Frustration with the lack of progress on practically every aspect of Lyme disease science and medicine, patients, advocacy organizations like ours, which is the Lyme Action Network, and private philanthropic organizations such as the Focus on Lyme Foundation, for which I am scientific advisor, are pulling together to fund new research and break through the Lyme disease status quo on diagnostic testing and treatments. Thanks to the funds provided by the New York State Senate Lyme and Tick-Borne Disease Task Force, and also from Focus on Lyme, we are filling a research void by building a biorepository of human blood samples. The blood will first be characterized by routine laboratory testing for evidence of tick-borne infections and then used to advance development of a molecular detection assay called LymeSeq, which will directly identify DNA and RNA from multiple species of Borrelia and all of the major co-infections, all of the major tick-borne diseases that often accompany Borrelia infection. Diagnostic tests such as LymeSeq would allow physicians to determine the infection status of their patients. So, in other words, people would, physicians would be able to know if their patients are actually infected and if antibiotics are an appropriate treatment for what the disease symptoms that they are experiencing. And in addition, it would be effective in all stages of the disease so that treatment could, there would be an endpoint to treatment. What time to stop treating, we would be able to know that as well. LymeSeq, which is being developed, by the way, by Dr. Paul Keim, who is an international expert on biological agents of bioterrorism, being able to detect those, will soon be ready for, is in the, is in analytical validity stage of development and will soon be ready for clinical validation studies starting this fall using samples from the Focus on Lyme Biorepository. And in the future, this biorepository will be available to other researchers to advance the state of knowledge for all tick-borne diseases, and along the way, we hope to significantly add to the body of knowledge about the rate of tick-borne co-infections for which there is next to no guidance at all. This is truly a patient-powered project. Participation has been overwhelming, with some people traveling from other states, and by other states, I mean Wisconsin, Minnesota, Ohio, and California, to participate in our sample collection clinics. I believe this speaks volumes about the level of frustration and how marginalized and gaslighted the Lyme community feels and how strong the need for change. The World Health Organization states that everyone has a right to the highest attainable standards of health, which includes access to medical care. The majority of Lyme disease patients are denied this basic right simply because the illness they experience does not fit within an incomplete, conflicted, and contested set of medical rules. Lyme disease is much more than a bullseye rash and rapidly resolving symptoms. It can be long-term, life-waltering, or life-ending, and suicide is a life-ending illness. Lyme disease patients and the brave physicians that put themselves on the line to treat them deserve to have their narrative heard. In the interest of time, I've also submitted written testimony, which is a review of the scientific underpinnings of the current medical guidelines. There are over 35 peer-reviewed references included with that, so that I hope you will take the time to read that to better understand what I have said in terms of the science that underlies all of this and the flaws that are inherent in it. Thank you for your testimony and for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you very much, Jill.
Thanks for the homework.
You're welcome.
This looks extraordinarily dense.
Yes, it is.
But important.
Fully referenced.
Well, I've got, thank you.
Yep.
Did you have any questions, or?
The, talk about the not great knowledge of the co-infections.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if, to the extent that, that needs to be, the database that they're collecting at the DOH needs to be changed or expanded or something like that, because they do, when you have related diseases to Lyme, they seem to be listing those.
They do. One thing that would be very helpful would be to consider Lyme disease as one of a tick-borne disease complex and test, in other words, people who come with a disease that could be Lyme disease should be tested for Lyme disease and the co-infections at the same time. Because for some people, it might not be Lyme disease that are causing their symptoms, it might be Bartonella, it might be Ehrlichia, it might be Babesia, which is a very important co-infection. But right now, the rate of co-infections in humans is pretty much unknown. The rate of co-infection in ticks, so in other words, the microbes that are in the ticks themselves, there are many studies to show that, you know, 50% of New York State ticks, and I know that it varies across the state, have one agent, but many have more than one. So we know that the ticks have the potential to transmit more than one microbe, so what is happening in humans? The lack of human information is stunning, actually, to guide, to move the science forward, and that's why the biorepository hopefully would be able to, will be able to make progress on that front.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Holly, I just had a follow-up question for you. I know last year, when we had the forum in Albany and you had gone down to Arizona to see the test that they were working on, how far along are they with that?
So that test is LymeSeq. It has a name.
Okay.
It is in the analytical development phases.
Could you spell that name?
LymeSeq is L-Y-M-E-S-C-Q.
Oh, that was in your testimony. Okay, LymeSeq, okay.
Yes. So the, Dr. Paul Keim, as I mentioned, is an expert on bioterrorism, biological agents of bioterrorism. He is the principal investigator on this test. The other is David Engelthaler, who was formerly with the CDC. So this test is, as I mentioned, in analytical development phases, they are going to be using the blood samples we provide to make sure that the test works, and then they'll be moving into clinical validation with a delivery date of this spring, right, February of 2018 is the delivery date for the test. So we are, we have worked very, very hard, and by we, I give the majority of credit to my partner, Tammy Crawford, at Focus on Lyme, who is pushing this forward on her end, and we've made remarkable progress in two years, and that's because of the dedication of the scientists who are actually working on it. That progress could have been made here in New York State, but it's not. So we obviously need a new test. I think it was brought up several times in the testimony that the lack of a good diagnostic is a significant limitation to patients and physicians, and so hopefully soon, we will have one.
So that test will be here in New York in February?
So, New York State testing, as you probably know, is sort of complicated. So, New York State testing, as you probably know, is sort of complicated, so it will be, the test itself is, we are going for FDA at least clearance for that test. Once it is available to be offered, then in order for New York State physicians to be able to write prescriptions for it, it will have to go through testing at the New York State, at Wadsworth as well, before they will say that it is worthy of testing here. Senator Hannity, if you remember, we talked about the state of testing with Bartonella, which is another tick-borne disease, which New York has yet to acknowledge is a tick-borne disease, and that the test, the best test in the, in the United States is not available to New York State physicians. And the reason why is really a technicality. So, as a-
That's why I asked the doctor before, because I was recollecting that, but I wasn't sure which test it was. And since then, a couple of labs have said, you know, we're not getting approved, or we're trying to get approved, and it has nothing to do necessarily with Lyme.
Right.
The number of requests is vast.
Yes.
But I've actually seen some of the decisions by Wadsworth, which even to a layperson, were entirely on the merits.
Absolutely, and New York State has the highest standards in the country. So if you have a test that is approved in New York State that physicians can order, then it has met the highest standards of testing, I think, there is. So, for, in some cases, that is true, but in others, the one thing that's holding up the Bartonella test is simply the fact that they use a type of DNA sequencing that they don't do here at Wadsworth, because Wadsworth does next-gen sequencing. That's the holdup for this test.
It would be useful if you could let me know more about that.
Right, I will, I will.
I mean, because there, there's obviously lots more. I mean, they, Wadsworth has come up the level that it's rated at, but I don't think that since they've done that increase in level, science has stood still, and the number of things that I can see happening in research, in the scientific community, happily even in New York, is just galloping ahead, so.
Yep, that's true. And I also wanted to add the iGenX test, which everybody was sort of talking about earlier, the test that's in California. That is a CLIA-certified, New York State-certified laboratory test. New York State physicians can order it, but what New York physicians don't know is that insurance company, in other words, they can order it, the patient has to pay, insurance companies reimburse for that test. But the company, iGenX itself, does not accept insurance, so, but in the case of my daughter, the, our insurance company reimbursed for that test. Physicians take that to mean they can't order the test. They can order the test in this state. And as I said, it met New York State certification standards, so therefore, it's a good test.
Yeah, and we have someone else who could not testify, but gave us some extensive background that was going through that sequence, and had to pay themselves the intermediate testing from that company for about $900 a test.
Right, that's right. And some tests that iGenX performs, like the PCR, for example, is not allowed in New York State. So, in other words, a physician could order the basic panel, but they can't order some of the tests because New York State will not allow it.
Well, they won't allow it because they haven't produced the evidence that it's reflective of what's taking place in the person.
That's true.
Okay, that's all, they, I don't know that for a fact, that's what they tell me, so.
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly's been in every one of my forums, and you know what, I always say, there's nothing like a mom on a mission, you know, microbiologist mom to boot.
That's right, a microbiologist mama bear, you got that right. Thank you.
Very much, Holly. Okay, now we're going to hear from Dr. Robert Bransfield. Dr. Bransfield? Oh, it's a Skype, I'm sorry. Okay, we're setting up. He's from the Department of Psychiatry, Roger Wood Johnson Medical School of Rutgers University.
Don't get nervous.
While we're waiting for this to come up, I have a constituent of mine who suffers from Lyme disease, who actually is sitting watching our webcast while she has her intravenous for five hours today with her nurse, and she's a young mom with young children, so, you know, that puts another picture for so many of us that, you know, haven't, haven't seen that, that side, and so, so sad. But she's actually, has enjoyed watching the webcast and has learned quite a bit from the different speakers today.
Do we want to go ahead with the next 12? Before we, with this?
Do you want us to have Dr. Us? No, here we go, sorry.
Doctor, we're about, we're seeing you. Are you aware that we're watching? Well, we, can, if you speak, we'll see if your audio's coming through. No, it's not. Could we check that it's not on mute? Doctor, we're not getting any audio from you, if you're-
Are you muted? Can you hear Us?
If you bring it here, we can get, take your phone and put it over the audio here, he's calling in.
Can you come down and make sure we just use that light?
Here. Just use the one at the witness stand.
Go ahead, Doctor, please speak.
Okay, so I go ahead now? Any hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for being here today. I'm really interested to keep asking this, critical. Who are the authorities for Lyme disease? Who are the experts?
I don't think that's working.
How do we diagnose Lyme disease? What are the most significant symptoms? How do we diagnose it? How do we treat it? How can we reconcile all the controversy? And how can those of us here do something to help the epidemic? First of all, who are the authorities?
I can't understand what you're saying.
Doctor, you're gonna have to hold on, we cannot understand you.
If there is an authority in science, it is evidence and judgment. If there is an authority in medicine, it is evidence-based medicine, which is sufficient of the best evidence available, physician judgment and patient preference. Lyme disease opinions of CDC and NIH employees are just that, and they should not be viewed as authority. Not only is it not authority, if they honor the most closest authority, maybe the online and American Toxic学 Association guidelines, which are relevant to Lyme disease and collectively represent 36, 37,000 physicians.
I can't understand it.
Those scientists who manage patients, you are doctors, physicians, doctors who practice within a week's span. That's the first expert in the limited area, and none of us are complete experts. The disease has been complicated, we have to use a collaborative approach. How do we treat Lyme disease? As a matter of an appointment-
You just didn't start over here. The words fell into the mic. We're doing it.
Clinical symptoms described in my chief statements. The broader definition recognizes its significance with broad spectrum of symptoms that we see. It also recognizes common factors that are not yet discovered, and it recognizes the limitations of currently standardized immune-based 2-2 testing that goes on a year basis, but one of the reasons that it places in a basic system. So we cut up a lot of the, uh, next 16 years of 18 years, and first, this research is , uh, of the, of the, of the, uh, tablets, um, for, uh, the, uh, the, uh, as long as it's, uh, it's, uh, 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 uh,
And at later time, we'll try to follow up with questions of you by phone. But that's just my, I don't know if the other senators might have heard better than I, I'm, you know.
No, Dr. Brownsville, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to hear either. And I actually had a brother that died by suicide who was undiagnosed or misdiagnosed for 10 years and ended up having Lyme disease. So I'm really looking forward to reading your written testimony. And I thank you for participating today and just sorry that we didn't have a better reception. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to hear from Dr. Rick Osfalt. He's the senior scientist from the Carey Institute of Ecosystem Studies. And also someone who does a lot of my forums.
And someone who's very first.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you at this very important hearing. One of the key take home messages for me from what I've heard this morning and afternoon is the high degree of passion and controversy about Lyme disease. In fact, almost everything about Lyme disease seems to be quite controversial. And I think the controversy and even acrimony reaches a pitch when it comes to diagnosis and treatment. And my research imagines a world in which mistakes in diagnosis and treatment or problems in doing an adequate job diagnosing and treating Lyme and other tick-borne diseases would be much less important. And in that world, we have done an effective job of reducing tick populations sufficiently and in the right places so that the actual exposure by human populations to infected ticks capable of making them sick is vastly reduced. That I think is one of the uncontroversial aspects of Lyme disease and other tick-borne diseases, is the need for controlling tick populations to reduce exposure in the first place. So we have fewer cases to diagnose and fewer cases to treat. So what I want to talk about briefly, given the hour, is a project that is designed to do exactly that. It's called the Tick Project. We're very creative with our titles. And it is jointly run by Dr. Felicia Keising at Bard College and myself at the Carey Institute of Ecosystem Studies in Millbrook, New York. One important point to realize is that there are a fairly large number of interventions, both chemical and biological control methods, that are known to be able to kill ticks. They're shown to kill ticks in small-scale field studies and very effectively in the lab. However, as has been mentioned earlier, there is not a single demonstrated case of the deployment of any of these biological or chemical tick control methods that has been shown to reduce the incidence of tick-borne disease in human populations. Why is that? Well, it could be because the studies were inadequately designed. I don't think that's true. But there is a gross underfunding of the type of field studies that are necessary to ask, how strongly do we need to control tick populations? Where do we need to do that? And at what times do we need to do that to reduce the incidence of tick-borne disease? So our study is designed to redress this deficiency. And what we are doing is a controlled, highly replicated field study in Dutchess County, New York, most of it in Senator Serino's district, where we have selected 24 neighborhoods in Dutchess County that we are deploying two different tick-killing interventions in those neighborhoods. The two tick-killing treatments are, number one is a naturally occurring fungus. So this is a microscopic fungus that occurs naturally in the northeastern U.S. It has the lovely name of Meterysium anisoplei. It's a name much longer than the microscopic organism itself. And this organism is known to adhere to and attack and kill ticks. It makes its living eating ticks and other arthropods. So we are not introducing an exotic species from somewhere else. We are using a strain, a naturally occurring strain of a naturally occurring fungus that is present already, but we are deploying it in enormous numbers. So it is sprayed as you would spray a chemical insecticide, but it's not a chemical, it's a biological species in a water solution. The other intervention is a thing called a bait box, which is a small box about the size of a bread box, that has a small amount of bait on the inside and it has two holes on the side. The bait attracts small mammals like white-footed mice and eastern chipmunks to enter the box. And if they do so, they brush against a small wick on their way to getting the food bait. That wick applies a minute drop of a chemical insecticide called Fipronil, which is the active ingredient in Frontline that we use on our dogs and cats, which is highly safe for those dogs and cats. And they get a massive dose compared to what white-footed mice and chipmunks get. That Fipronil kills the ticks that are trying to feed or are already feeding on these small mammals. And those are critically important ticks because they're the ones feeding on the hosts that are likely to boost their numbers. We know that from other studies in my lab, that white-footed mice in particular are able to boost numbers of ticks. And also perhaps more importantly, those are the sources of infection of these ticks. These black-legged ticks are born without infection. They have to acquire the agents of Lyme disease, babesiosis, anaplasmosis, et cetera, somewhere. And predominantly where they get that is from feeding on mice, chipmunks, and to some extent, shrews. So we're killing the ticks on the hosts that amplify tick populations and infect them with the disease agents. We are applying these treatments throughout residential neighborhoods rather than in individual isolated backyards. And the reason for that is that prior studies designed by the CDC that applied a chemical insecticide in individual backyards, thousands of them, but nevertheless, not a cluster of them in a neighborhood, failed to reduce the incidence of tick-borne disease in those, the residents of those properties. Our study is a randomized placebo-controlled and double-blind study. So we have placebos for the bait boxes, which are bait boxes that lack Fipronil. They lack the tick-killing chemical. We have a placebo control for the Meterysium fungal spray, which is a water spray that is done exactly the same way, except that it contains no fungal spores. It is double-blind, meaning that neither the residents of these neighborhoods nor us as researchers know ahead of time what treatment each neighborhood is receiving. So it meets the highest standards, it's the scientific gold standard of scientific rigor. We have six neighborhoods that are treated with both intervention treatments that are active, six that are treated with the fungus but an inactive bait box, six that are treated with an active bait box but an inactive fungus, and six that are full controls in which both interventions are inactive. We then have, every two weeks, we ping every resident of each of these neighborhoods and we, by either text or email, or in some cases if they insist, by phone. And we ask them whether they or any member of their household, and this includes Bowser the dog and Fluffy the cat, who are enrolled in our studies along with all the human residents, whether any of them has either had a tick on their bodies or their clothing in the prior two weeks, or has had a case of any tick-borne disease diagnosed. If they say no, we leave them alone for two more weeks. If they say yes, then we follow up and garner medical records for the humans in the household. We also sample ticks on their properties by standardized field methods. And we trap the small mammals on their properties and determine how many ticks are on those small mammals as well. But we're fundamentally interested in cases of tick-borne disease in these neighborhoods. So we're in year two of a five-year study. The interventions began last spring. They are continuing into the fall. They will continue for three more consecutive years. To date, we have almost 1,000 households enrolled in this study, and that's more than 4,000 individual human residents. I'm not sure what the numbers are for dogs and cats. And the treatments will continue through 2020, and we will be analyzing the data at some point in the midst of this study when we have sufficient data to assess the efficacy of these tick-killing interventions. Lastly, I want to indicate that this is a case of a public-private partnership when it comes to funding. The bulk of the funding comes from the Stephen and Alexandra Cohen Foundation, so that's private funding. But we have additional support, quite generously, from New York State through the Senate Task Force, as well as some funding from the CDC, as well as quite a number of very small private donors, including $10 checks that sometimes come into the Carey Institute. Thank you for your attention.
Congratulations again, that many people that take a phone call every two weeks.
We wish that we could convert some of the less technologically savvy people to letting us text them or email them at least.
Are you going to cross-relate the incidence of disease with the incidence of the pests that you find that have the ticks?
Yes, we will absolutely have the data to be able to do so. As I've said, we're focusing on the epidemiologic response variable, meaning that the cases of tick-borne disease, as well as encounters with ticks by people and their pets. But we are also very interested in the degree to which we're reducing the abundance of ticks in these neighborhoods. Unfortunately, in the past, sometimes 60, even 70% reduction in the abundance of ticks found in people's yards does not translate into reduced probability that they'll get sick. But none of those studies have been done at the neighborhood scale. They've all been done in isolated individual yards. And we think with our two tick-control methods, we'll get well greater than 70% control of the tick population. So we're hopeful that doing this at the right scale and with enhanced intensity will actually result in protected health.
Now, if you'd help me, because Senator Serino got you to do this in her district. I just don't know about the Carey Institute. And if you'd just describe it for us, because it sounds to me this is a very welcome test that's going on, and you have some obviously background that lead to these studies. If you could just tell us a little bit about the Carey Institute.
Absolutely. And I can provide written information if you'd like. I'd be happy to do so. The Carey Institute is an independent, not-for-profit ecological research institute in Millbrook. So we are on a 2,000-acre campus. We are a group of about 15 PhD-level ecologists. We study everything from the ecology of infectious disease, to the Hudson River, to invasive species, to climate warming, to the future of northeastern forests. We get our funding for research usually from federal sources, like the National Science Foundation, USDA, also the CDC and NIH for the infectious disease research. We are the equivalent of a university ecology department, but without all the students, which has its pluses and minuses.
Helps to avoid grading.
I'm sorry, to avoid.
No grading.
Yeah, yeah, that's a sync for time.
Thank you, thank you. I just, I didn't know, it just sort of be important to the context. And I know Senator Serino said, you do great things, so now I know why.
It's a great institute.
Because I believe that this, the Tick Project, is costing about $8 million over the course.
Our total budget is about $8.8 million over a five-year period. And we're still fundraising to make those ends meet.
I get the point.
I'm always going after money in the budget. But the Cohen Foundation actually supplied $5 million towards this research, which was great. And I think one of the reasons, if I understand correctly, is because they saw that the state was putting invested interest by supplying money in the budget. So thank you to the Cohen Foundation very much for that amount of money.
Yes, I appreciate those comments. They've stepped into a breach, because many of the prior speakers have indicated that the level of funding is inadequate. And I can tell you, there is no way that a research institution or two institutions, Bard College and the Carey Institute together, are conducting this, would ever get $5 million from a federal agency to conduct research like this. And I think similar aspect is true for other kinds of Lyme disease research that are focused on diagnosis and treatment. So they've stepped in, and it's very important, yet they are also interested in having us leverage their funds with other private funds and public funds as well. And they do very much appreciate having funds from the state, as well as the federal government, in fostering this research that hopefully will provide solutions.
That's great. Thank you so much, Dr. Osfalt.
Enormous. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we'd love to hear preliminary results.
When we unblind, you'll be the first to know.
Okay, and our next speaker is going to be Christina Fisk. She's the president of the Lyme Action Network. Thank you very much for being here today, Christina.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your endurance.
That being said, you could summarize.
I will, I won't go, you know, I'll just kind of rush through various sections, because actually, some of it has already been reviewed. So you've heard from a lot of, you've heard from a lot of scientists today. My perspective is a little bit different. So there's some things that just are not science-based, and I think they're very important for you to consider. Today, I'm speaking on the issue of patients' rights, particularly as they apply to Lyme disease patients. I would like to bring to your attention behaviors and practices occurring in this state all day, every day, that deny one solitary population of medically afflicted individuals their rights as patients and human beings, practices which are so pervasive that they've become normalized and assimilated into daily medical routine, and which, when challenged, are vigorously and wrongfully defended. Lyme disease is one of 25 known conditions where there's more than one treatment option available to the patient. Breast cancer and prostate cancer are other familiar examples where you have choices about your treatment. Physicians access information about treatment options through the National Guideline Clearing House, NGC, which is a database of peer-reviewed treatment protocols maintained by an agency within the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Guidelines posted on the NGC must meet the rigorous standards of being peer-reviewed, evidence-based, and developed for trustworthiness and transparency, as required by the National Academy of Medicine. These are referred to as grade standards. In other words, the treatment guidelines posted on the NGC are legitimate and can be trusted. We all take it for granted that if there are choices to be made about our care, we'll be properly informed, advised, and consulted, and that's probably a safe bet, unless, unless you're a Lyme patient. If you happen to get bitten by a tick, this system does not apply to you. As a matter of fact, it applies to just about everybody except you. Although Lyme disease can be treated by more than one set of guidelines, the predominant custom of the medical professionals in this country, including those in New York, is to ignore the patient's right to be fully and accurately informed about his disease and treatment options, and offer only one treatment construct. The CDC-favored construct has hardly changed in 40 years. Forty years, how many diseases do you know haven't changed in 40 years? Is based upon badly flawed original science, which Holly referred to from the 1970s, has been deleterious to countless patients, and has been actively contested and criticized for its failures since the 1980s. These old guidelines were not developed to the grade standards, as is now required by the National Academy of Medicine. And in fact, they were delisted from the NGC in 2016 for being out of date and out of compliance. While they are currently under revision, physicians and medical organizations can still use them, and they do, to the near complete exclusion of the more current treatment guidelines posted in 2015 that are based on current and independent research, and not only meet, but exceed internationally accepted standards. These new guidelines are recognized by the ACA and at least 15 other federal authorities. If you are bitten by a tick, nearly no first-line medical professional will tell you that you have a choice of treatment options, one old and out of date, and another more current. You won't be told that a growing number of physicians around the globe have been turning to the newer guidelines in face of the frequent and often catastrophic failures of the old guidelines. No one will explain to you that the guidelines under which you will be treated often fail the patient from their first diagnostic visit, where misinformation of astonishing scope appears to be the norm, not the exception. I have a couple of examples, but I'll just mention two. One is a very difficult story by a young man in Hudson Valley with confirmed late-stage neurological Lyme disease committed to a psychiatric institution. Although his family is requesting treatment under the new guidelines, which actually are the only ones posted on the NGC right now, their requests have been constantly denied. He was receiving no treatment for Lyme disease, and he is deteriorating rapidly and seriously. Another story just grabbed me, I got this a couple of weeks ago. Mother of a two-year-old little guy was bitten by, I heard from the mother, the little two-year-old was bitten by the tick, developed rashes, swollen joints, extreme fatigue, and a fever, and was initially diagnosed with Lyme disease, and began treatment and was very responsive. And then was removed from treatment when his blood tests came back negative. This is the blood test that everybody's talking about that's wrong 50% or more of the time. The doctor believed the blood test was definitive, told the mother that those bull's-eye rashes on her little guy were just allergies, and discontinued treatment. His health deteriorated precipitously until he was finally diagnosed with Lyme by another doctor weeks later, and restarted on antibiotics, which can be very problematic. If you get bitten by a tick and treatment is prescribed, no one will mention that the old guidelines recommend less treatment than the newer guidelines, sometimes only one dose, which someone had mentioned earlier, and that insufficient or inconsistent treatment is frequently implicated in longer-term illness in many patients. Nobody will mention any of that to you. You will be given one choice, often accompanied by dangerous misinformation, and you can take it or leave it. If you know enough to request the newer guidelines, you will be denied. The antiquated guidelines are the ones taught in the medical schools, served up with a heavy dose of bias against the newer and competitive guidelines. Incredibly and unfortunately, taxpayer dollars are used to perpetuate biased information in the development of public education materials, and in the support of professional continuing medical education that only represents the old construct. State-funded medical institutions, psychiatric facilities, correctional institutions, and other state entities adhere to only one badly flawed point of view. These old guidelines have such a tight grip on mainstream medicine that they take on the affect of a religious conviction, rather than a field supposedly informed by scientific fact. Patients have a right to accurate and honest information, and they have a right to choose their treatment option. What's happening hundreds of times a day is institutionalized discrimination against one group of disabled people. The reasons behind this are well-known, and unfortunately, we don't have time, I'm sure, to discuss this now, but they don't matter to this charge. Our claim today is that Lyme patients, uniquely unlike any other category of people temporarily or permanently disabled, are victims of a pervasive and broad pattern of discrimination. These discriminations are often against vulnerable patient groups, women and children, children make up the highest percentage of new cases every year, the impoverished, the elderly, and others. To add insult to injury, their insurance, which only covers limited treatment under the old guidelines, usually terminates after a few weeks because they are declared cured by their physicians after a short course of treatment, as per the old guidelines, and they are left to fend for themselves against a highly complex and very destructive bacterial infection. These abuses are in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and the American Medical Association's Code of Ethics. They also offend the fundamental tenets of the World Health Organization, which has declared that the enjoyment of the highest attainable standard of health is one of the fundamental rights of every human being. Better health is attainable if people are allowed and encouraged to access better treatment. I come today not to ask you to take on a 35-year-old battle between professional medical societies, but rather to take an active stand on behalf of the people who have been relentlessly victimized and marginalized by this controversy. We ask that you initiate a course of action that will result in tick-borne disease patients having full access, not only to complete and correct information about their illnesses, like every other group, but also have reasonable access to the treatment of their choosing and reasonable parity in insurance coverage. We urge you to inspire New York State to take a leadership role to end business as usual regarding the discrimination against Lyme patients and their healthcare providers, and find equitable solutions to the unjust relationships they have with their insurance companies. We're not asking for anything special. We're just asking that Lyme patients receive the same rights and considerations as every other person with a health challenge. By changing the mindset from that of an intractable medical issue to one of improving a system based upon the restoration of patients' rights, positive effects will result and opportunities will emerge. Individuals who are diagnosed and treated early and adequately are unlikely to join the ranks of the chronically ill. And considering the speed with which those people are getting chronically ill, that's a huge advantage. Individuals who regain their health, even to some degree, can retain their jobs and maintain financial independence. Insurance companies that embrace early intervention can spend pennies to sufficiently address Lyme disease early in the course of the disease, saving fortunes on later testing and treatment for a myriad of complications, such as cardiac and neurological problems that occur later. Market demand for updated treatment protocols is high, and if allowed, could support new medical treatment enterprises. New York can encourage the process through the investment in regional treatment centers similar to the Spalding Center in Boston, which now has a one-year waiting list. There's much more to talk about on this topic and all the positive outcomes that can flow from reform, and we'd be delighted to participate in any discussions going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Christina. And as I said earlier today, we are here because of the patients and the people that are suffering from Lyme disease. And this, I think, was a great panel. We brought everybody to the table, so.
You didn't let us duke it all out, though.
Kemp, did you have anything to add?
No, I think that I get your point very carefully, and I think the prior sets of testimony give substance as to why all of that comes about.
I agree.
It forms, I think it forms a pretty good agenda of what has to be addressed.
I think from all points of view, at the end of the day, physician education rises to the top of the list for discussion.
That is a very difficult task to occur. We went through it with trying to do pain management with opioids. We initially had appointed through the Heroin Task Force a committee of physicians to come up with pain guidelines that would properly and appropriately have prescribing for opioids. After they met for, I don't know, 18 months, they deadlocked, and it did not have a recommendation. And so it took us as a legislature to step in as we negotiated the deep heroin measures that we had, opioid measures, in 2016, so that we were required continuing medical education, which did not go over very well by telling anything to the physicians. So it's something that needs to be done with some insight and intelligence as to how to get them to agree.
And this is why I framed this in terms of patient rights to information, because I am aware of that problem.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, the agenda's broadened, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, and I'd like to thank everyone in the audience today that was here and the participants. This was very informational for all of us, so thank you. And then thank you, Senator Hannity, for being here today.
And if anybody would like to submit any information to Senator Serino or myself, we'd be happy to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.